The council met in closed session. Item B one was conference with legal counsel, potential initiation of litigation that involved two potential cases. On the first potential case, there was no reportable action. On the second potential case, there was reportable action. There was a motion authorizing the city attorney's office to file a petition to appoint a receiver for property located at six three five East American. The motion was made by council member White, the second by Mayor Lara, and the vote was as follows: Mayor Lara in favor of the motion, Mayor Pro Tem Voight in favor of the motion, Councilmember White in favor of the motion, Councilmember Martinez in favor, and Councilmember Finn in favor. The second item was B two, conference with real property negotiators. The address one oh five West Sixth Street. There was no reportable action. Item B three, conference with legal counsel regarding a existing litigation workers' comp matter. There was no reportable action. Item B four was conference with labor negotiators. The agency designated representative, Elizabeth Gibbs. The unrepresented employees are listed in the agenda. There was no reportable action taken on that item. And then lastly, item B five was public employee performance evaluation, the position city manager, and there was no reportable action on that item.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have an invocation by Paulo Becerra, and the pledge will be done by council member White. May I please stand?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of community. We thank you for this meeting. We pray your blessing, and we ask that your presence will be here. We thank you for Mayor Lara and his team. We pray that you will give them wisdom to make right decisions, compassion, fairness, and that they will be blessed as you guide them. We pray that the city will flourish under your blessing, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Call, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
I think we do have one adjustment, and that would be to take item J one up ahead of the public hearings. Is that what we wanted to do?
If you'd like to do that, Mayor, sure.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we have no conflict of interest to disclose this evening. That brings us to item E, announcements and recognitions proclamations. Recognition of Police Captain George Walter by Ms. Gibbs.
I'm going to start here, and then I'll meet you at the podium, Captain. I would like to formally recognize Captain George Walter. He served as interim police chief for us when our previous police chief, Sean Polis, moved on to Tustin. He stepped in, whether he wanted to or not. And so he served in the interim police chief role from March eighteenth of this year to July fourteenth of this year. And as you know, I had recommended to council on July fifteenth that we appoint our newest police chief, Chris Ramos, who unfortunately could not be here with us tonight because he's at Command College, and we fully support him doing that. So we did get a little gift for Captain Walter. Again, we appreciate everything you did. You served steadfastly and represented the city well, and I personally appreciate everything that you did for the city in the interim.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Thank you. Thank you. Real quick, if I could just say it was an honor and a privilege sincerely to work in that capacity, unexpected in my career, and I have a newfound respect. I've worked with this staff, but not this intimately, and you've got an amazing staff here, from the bottom of my heart. They're hard workers, and I appreciate them.
All right. Thank you. Walter, we also, sir, if we ever need somebody to stand in for our flag, well, you'll be the first. You'll be the first to recall. That brings us to the public comment period for items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a form, a public comment form provided at the back table, and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Nicole, do we have any public comments this evening?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, so that brings us to the consent calendar, item G. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion from consent?
Mayor, can I pull items G eight and G fifteen?
G eight and G fifteen?
Correct. I believe it's G fifteen. Let me make sure really quick.
Any other items? Or do we have a motion to approve the balance?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion to approve items G one through seven, nine through fourteen, and sixteen through twenty.
I'll second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Voight?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you said White. I'm eager today.
Where did I leave off?
Elaine, I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nicole, really quickly, do we have any public comments for any of the items on consent? I forgot to check. My apologies.
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay. So we have, that carries, item G eight, finance purchasing policy update.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of walk through this process so that I understand. So it sounds like, thanks, Lisa, so it sounds like what we are requesting is that when city council approves, that you guys would then roll forward with the requisition and purchase order without having to bring it back.
To bring it back, correct, yeah. This should speed up some of the process in the requisition and purchase order.
Okay, so essentially, the, we would just come, you wouldn't have to come back. Our initial is, would satisfy?
Yes, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other, does anybody have any questions on that? I just wanted to verify that.
Okay.
All right, and then G fifteen. This is on the Cherry Channel. So the only question I had on here is that we have an incident where we have an expiration. Do we have a process in play to prevent this in the future so that we're catching the expiration sooner versus an expiration in November of 2024, and we're almost a year later?
Yes, we do have a system in place to catch these. Unfortunately, a few of them do slip through the cracks, but in this particular case, we started negotiating long before it expired, and our negotiations just failed. And then to get it on the agenda took more than, more time than expected.
All right, very good. I just wanted to make sure that we have a process in play to catch these six months and ahead of time or something to make sure that we're not hitting that point of expiration to have to go all the way up. All right. With that, I will move to approve items G eight and G fifteen if there are no other.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. So with that, we have a staff report, and we have a consultant here for J one, so just I'm doing that ahead of the public comment, our public hearing, sorry.
Mayor, do you want to see if there's any update on the youth council report first?
Yes, we have, any public, any?
We have not had a meeting. We are out advertising, soliciting for applications for the youth council for this upcoming year.
Oh, thank you.
But we have not had a meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So it brings us to J one. Dustin.
All right, I'm just going to quickly introduce our consultant, who's here to cover the feasibility study. In November first, 2024, we issued a contract to STC Traffic to do this feasibility study. It focused on the most congested traffic corridors, including Beaumont Avenue and Highland Springs Avenue, and the scope of work included in assessing the existing traffic signals, evaluating available signal control technologies, and then making recommendations specifically for AI detection to improve traffic flow through the city at our signals. So with that, I will introduce, we have Jason Stack and Duncan Hughes here from STC that will be presenting the results of that study.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I am very excited to be here to present the smart technology at traffic signals feasibility study, and I think I'm going to put this into presentation. There we go. All right, and, and again, super excited to be here. This is a game changer for the traffic system here in the city of Beaumont. I'm going to walk you through the, the study that we put together. Study's about fifty pages or so. There's an executive summary at the front end, and this presentation provides a condensed version of that, and happy to take any questions that you might have. So I'm Jason Stack, owner of STC Traffic. So I'm Jason Stack, owner of STC Traffic. Have about 25 years of traffic engineering and systems experience. And I'm supported here by Duncan Hughes, who has a few years more than me in experience, maybe going on 30. But, yeah, we both worked hand in hand to put this study together. So a little bit, a little overview of the presentation agenda. We're going to talk about the purpose and need of the study, the approach that we took to evaluating technology, and going to walk you through the traffic systems pyramid. It kind of shows how the systems relate to each other in a kind of a easy-to-understand way, some example deployments, and then the next steps and how this is going to be implemented. So, purpose and need, I think people recognize the city here. There's a very busy freeway running through the city. And like a lot of other cities in Southern California, the freeway is the, is the place where everybody wants to get to and get from. And you have your primary arterials that connect at the interchanges to the freeway. And they're busy arterials. The arterial network from the west to the east, Highland Springs, Beaumont, Oak Valley, and then you have the numbered streets that run from north to south. And the city's experienced a lot of growth. One of the things that's a constraint for cities that deal with a lot of traffic is you have a limited amount of right-of-way. And as you build out the city, we need to control intersections to make the traffic move safely, where you have crossing arterials and crossing streets. And as traffic increases, it becomes more critical to have a smart system that's able to move the traffic through these intersections in a managed way so that people don't have excessive delay at the intersections. So here's a graph of what's a typical, you know, traffic volume profile over the course of a day here in Beaumont. You can see it starts on the purple end, low traffic volumes. Those are in the very off-peak periods late at night. Then it starts to ramp up in the morning peak. People are trying to get to the freeway, to get to their jobs in different areas of the region. And then it continues to, you know, the traffic continues to be steady and high during the middle of the day. And then it really ramps up in the evening when people are trying to get home. So this is really what we're looking to, to deal with on a daily basis here in Beaumont on your arterials and at your traffic signals. And what do we have that's at our disposal in order to deal with those traffic volumes? What's out there today is a bit dated. You can see that I compare it to the old dial-up telephone. It's, it really is the type of technology that's out there today. And that technology simply can't deal with the amount of complexities that are out there with our, you know, modern traffic environment. You've got vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, emergency vehicles, all sorts of demands at the intersections and along your arterials. And there's a lot of data that we want to pull from the street, analyze, and then, you know, send solid plans down to the intersections so that they can work in an optimized way and work together to move people in an optimized way. What you see here is a, is a traffic signal cabinet. This is, again, pretty old technology. Up there is the computer that controls the signal, and that's based on 1970s technology. And we really want to move that here into the modern era. And that's, that's what the study's all about. So the approach to the study is to take the city from a reactive, you know, a reactive approach to dealing with traffic to a proactive one. And what's that mean? You know, traditionally with CIP projects and development projects and that sort of thing, when signals are built, you put in the technology that's available at that time. And you may be thinking about signals that are upstream or downstream from that signal. Sometimes those signals aren't part of the improvement program. So it was really ad hoc. It was an isolated intersection. We're going to build this out. We're going to put in something that, that, you know, quote-unquote, makes it smart. But it wasn't a systematic approach. And that's what this study does, is it looks at the city and the arterial network in a systematic way. And what we're doing is we're matching the technologies with the complexities. That traffic profile that I showed you, the interagency coordination that needs to take place with Caltrans, supercritical. And another element that's important to Beaumont is automation. You need technology that's actually, you know, on the leading edge so that, you know, the city has limited resources. Some bigger cities have people that work in traffic management centers, you know, as their job. Here in Beaumont, that's not available. So we want the system to be smart enough to understand how it's working and to do a lot of those human things that we used to have to do, but the smarter systems can do now through the advancement and applications and technology. And then safety and efficiency. This is, you know, technology, it costs tens of millions of dollars to widen an arterial, widen an interchange. I mean, tens of millions of dollars is probably on the low end. But with technology, you're able to accomplish it with millions of dollars and get a super-high return out of the investment. So that's one of the big benefits of this, of the approach. And here's the, the traffic signal system in a pyramid shape. I like to show it this way because it shows the foundation of the traffic system, which is the detection that senses the vehicles out on the roadway. And then it works up to the local control that's contained in the cabinet on the local intersection, and then into communications that allows the local intersection to communicate with a central management system. That central management system that can observe the data, understand how things are working, whether they're working in a healthy way. And then you have this smart layer, and really, so we, in this study, we built up to this smart layer. And the smart layer is the capstone. That's the part that's really going to make things work in a, in a very optimized way here in Beaumont. And that is the artificial intelligence and the adaptive type of signal operation. And that was the primary focus of this study. So over to the left, the foundational layers. We've got a plan to implement those so that that smart technology, that AI, artificial intelligence, and adaptive overlay can work with all the systems that are supporting it. But here on the right, you see a little, you know, comparison of the different technologies. What's out there today, the legacy technologies, and the new technologies that are going to be implemented. So, you know, you've been out at intersections. You probably have seen these cuts in the pavement, their loops. They're pretty, they're pretty basic. But the new, new technology is going to be using video. And it's going to be able to recognize different kinds of vehicles, different kind of users at the intersection. The, the older controllers, like the one that I showed you from the 1970s, 10 kilobits per second. That's very slow. You simply can't move information or process information with those controllers anymore. The newer controllers have a lot more processing power. And then the communication systems, you can see plain old telephone service versus 5G cell networks and fiber optic communications. And then that's, you don't have a central management system now, but there will be once this study is implemented. And that's an interface that you see there up on the right. So at the top of the pyramid is the, is the smart technology. And here's an example of, of what that video system is able to do. It's able to recognize pedestrians. It's able to recognize vehicles. It can classify vehicles. It knows whether it's an emergency vehicle, knows whether it's a truck, knows whether it's a car. It, it can track pedestrians through the intersection. Your detection today knows whether there's somebody waiting at the intersection, but it doesn't know if they left to go through the intersection, other than, you know, opening up when the car releases. These will actually track a vehicle through the intersection. So you have efficiencies in how the signal's operating, but also safety in collision avoidance. Being able to see, okay, hey, this, this system's telling me that, you know, two cars were in the intersection at the same time that shouldn't have been. And it can set an alarm and let us operators know that something like that's taking place. The thing that was able to, to really advance this technology was the Edge Graphics Processing Unit. All of the horsepower on the processing side used to be in a central server. And every, all the information had to move to a central location and then move back down to the intersection. Now with the Edge, you know, computers at the local intersection, it doesn't have to do that. It can actually do the processing locally and communicate with other intersections that it's tied to. And so our focus, from a smart technology standpoint, was on the, the industry manufacturers and products that are available today that are accomplishing this kind of operation. The systems reviewed, we had a handful of systems that we reviewed. Two really stand out, the No Traffic System and the Rhythm and Sync System. Both of these provide a detection system with artificial intelligence plus an application that gets you the adaptive operation that can change how the signals operate based on the real-time demand at the intersection, rather than putting in plans ahead of time that are working based on what happened before. And this, this kind of system is working based on real-time information. The functional requirements, we talked about that a little bit. Fully automated city, we want the, the system to be able to do as much of that artificial intelligence processing as it, as it can without the human element in the loop. And then we did some standard comparison factors. You know, all of these systems would represent an improvement to the traffic system here in Beaumont. But we wanted to isolate some, some of these factors like cost, product support, ease of maintenance, how many agencies here in Southern California are using it. We want to make sure it's, you know, advanced technology, but not bleeding-edge technology. It's proven. So we did a lot of that kind of analysis when we were looking at these technologies. And here is an, here's an example of the kind of benefits that you can expect once this technology is implemented. Typical performance metrics that we use as traffic engineers to see how an arterial is performing, travel time, speed, and stops. Basically, we want the travel time to go down. We want the speed to go up reasonably. And we want the stops to be reduced. We want more green lights than red lights. And, and this is an example of Winchester Road in Temecula, very busy arterial roadway, very similar to Beaumont in that the, the signal system was not communicating. It didn't have smart technology. It wasn't connected to a central management system. After we implemented those systems and then observed how it wanted to operate the signals, crunched the data, made sure that it was running well, we saw improvements of, on the order of 30%. And this is the kind of improvements that we've seen in cities throughout Riverside and San Diego County. It's fairly common. And so the expectations, more greens or reds. One, one reason why I introduced the, the volume chart here again is because the improvements are going to be really good, but at the peak of the peak, we're dealing with managing a demand that's overcapacity. So, you know, we do things like gate the system so that when we, you know, let a car into the system or a platoon of vehicles into the system, we try to get them through as many signals as possible and then stop them at what would be a logical stop, another big intersection. Get them through some of the smaller intersections, stop them at the big intersection. But when you have saturated, you know, demand conditions, the capacity, you're really managing that. In between the peaks and in the off-peaks, you should see a lot more green lights. And there's where the system can really, it's, it's more flexible in how it can operate the arterial. So, and we're going to establish a baseline. This is super important. I think that there's a video coming up that we're going to show you how, Rob's going to show you an example out in, that the, out in Coachella Valley, where they do a before and after. But establishing that baseline is super important. We want to know how the system is running today. And then when, when the systems go in and we get that new operation in place, we're going to be able to see the benefit and then monitor that benefit. It doesn't just end when we put the system in and we optimize a signal and, you know, hey, guys, it's working great. We want to, we want that system to be monitored as long as it's operational so that we can make sure that it's doing a better job of what it should be doing. That's operating the signals. So implementation, phasing, and priority. Here in Beaumont, it's a corridor approach. Your, the first priority is Highland Springs. And then we take it to the group of signals around Beaumont Ave and, and parallel to the 10, and then work our way over to Oak Valley. And this is all about deploying the system as rapidly as possible so that the benefits can be achieved as fast as possible. It's a five-year plan, but these three areas, these colored areas, are going to be implemented in, in three years. And Highland Springs would be implemented in the first year. And here's another representation of that from, you know, the phase and the, and the location and the cost. So overall, Highland Springs, it's about $680,000 to get implemented in the first year. And then we move over to Beaumont, about a million dollars there, and then Oak Valley. When all is said and done, the, the critical elements are implemented in phases 1, 2, and 3 in the first three years. We have made recommendations for updating cabinets, putting in fiber optic communications. Those are really expensive because you have to put pipe in the ground in order to, to get that fiber optic cable in the ground. So there's a, there's a higher cost associated with that, and that's why you see the, the $5 million there at the five-plus years. And from the study now to implementation, the next step is to put together design documentation. It's, this is something that's going to be bid to a contractor and to the vendors. The city will procure the systems after that, and then installation. The, the design and engineering work, you know, from this point, probably a couple of months, three months. It's not heavy design work. It's schematic, you know, type of design. And then a specification that goes along with that procurement and installation. So, and then we go through a process of validating that the system is, is functioning the way it should be. Then we get into the operations and performance monitoring. That's what we're looking at for a timeline over the next three years of the phased approach. And I got a bullet here for Caltrans permitting and coordination. While all of this is taking place, coordinating with Caltrans is supercritical. And they will require us to, to go through a permit process in order to implement this, these, these improvements at their ramps. We've had success doing that in other agencies. And so with that, I'd like to thank you, and I'll take any questions. I'd also like to thank Dustin, Rob, and Vince. They, they were instrumental in helping us to, you know, put this study together.
Thank you, Jason. I'd just like to piggyback on his presentation with two things. I have a video in Coachella Valley of before and after the system was implemented, just to show real-time the differences. I'll show that in just a second. If I can switch to my machine. But in anticipation of the results of this study, council has approved the CIP with $2 million to implement this. So barring any exception from council, staff is ready to move into the next phase that Jason was talking about, developing the, the plans and designing those, designing for those interchanges, particularly on Highland Springs. And with that, I'd like to have you focus on the monitor. CV Sync presented to WRCOG in recent weeks. And they, they have a system in Coachella Valley with nine agencies partnered to implement this type of system or a similar system throughout the whole Coachella Valley. They had particular corridors in, in place, and this will be one of them. So the, the video, just to set it up, it's a split screen where you have the before on top and the before, excuse me, and the after on top and the before, excuse me, and the after on bottom. And you are following a car going through all the intersections. I don't remember what street this is or wasn't, wasn't told to us or how long it is, but it's time. And you, you can see clearly the, the difference. So what you're noticing on the after is very few signals or less signals that are, that are stops. And then the duration at the stop is significantly reduced. So the one on the bottom has completed in 17 minutes. And the one on the top is 22, so roughly two and a half, five and a half minutes. And Jason has personally promised that we would see similar times on Highland Springs. So with that, concludes the presentation. Jason, as he previously mentioned, is available for question and so is staff.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this. I think it's going to be great. I do have a question though. When we get to the part where we're ready to, to award a bid for the construction work, can, would that bid be with, through one contractor to do all the work so then they know what the parameters are and so forth? Or do we dissect it out by phase?
It'll be by phase due to the funding gap. Like we won't have all the funding available for all three phases. So we may be able to group several phases together for the initial install. And then they would have, it would be the same exact specs, equipment, and requirements for subsequent phases.
Okay. And then I would assume is there like an AI learning curve as the, as the, in terms of like, maybe it's, I'm just going to make something up here. 80% efficient at a new intersection and it learns what, what our locals do and so forth, and it gets better at it? Is there that type of component to it?
There is something like that. You know, the, it's machine learning. So it's using those video cameras to observe all the traffic conditions at the intersection. And when it's first installed, it's seeding itself. It takes, you know, a week, two weeks, three weeks for that machine to build up a profile and understand the typical traffic conditions and then understand when, when traffic conditions aren't typical and recognize that. And so it's learning in that sense how things are.
So is that put in place prior to flipping the switch to the new system? And that's learning while the old system is in place? And then you just flip a switch and then connect the light to the new one and off we go? Is it kind of like that?
It is kind of like that. The, the smart system that's at the top layer of that pyramid, that's the last switch that's flipped. So everything else is built up to that. So there will be improvements with those, as those layers are built. And then once that's put in, you'll see the full, the full improvement.
So we shouldn't see several days of like stop signs out and flashing reds and all that sort of stuff, correct?
No, these are, these are mostly plug and play type of devices. You can, what, what we do is try to set them up on the bench as close to what's required out in the field and then put them in the field. They're ready to go. You test them on site right there that day. And then you don't leave it until it's operating the way you expect it to. And so no stop signs, no, no major impacts for construction. You'll have bucket trucks putting cameras on, traffic signal mast arms. So you'll have impacts while people are installing wire and that sort of thing. But it's, it's not like the systems, the signal will be in some alternative state of operation because it can't function the way it should. It'll, it'll be functioning throughout that process.
Gotcha. Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
The amount that you quoted for Highland Springs was six something rather. Is that just the southbound side of Highland Springs or is that both sides since the other side's in Banning? Is that their share? Is that our share? Is that the total of it?
That's the total.
And how do we do that with Banning?
So staff has been in communication with the counterpart at, at Banning. We haven't discussed cost sharing as of yet, but it would be in their best interest to allow at least Beaumont to implement that, that system.
I don't really want to implement a system that we're paying the full amount for and they're getting equal benefit out of it, but that's for later discussion. Thank you.
Councilor Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And so both of my questions were actually addressed, but you know, just to piggyback on that, my concern was, you know, with Caltrans, you know, have you worked with them before? You know, because there are Caltrans signals and then with the other entity such as Banning involved, you know, is that something that you've had experience with trying to get all of that together? But I think we, I'm pretty much, do you have any other comment on that?
No, other than, you know, local city to, to local city, the relationship and the way things operate are more similar. With Caltrans, there's, there's more of an involved process.
But they've had obviously other jurisdictions that have used this on their signals, so they're open to that.
Yes. District Eight is actually eager to implement, to, to learn these systems, get their hands on them, implement them, and, and improve traffic at the, at the ramp signals too.
And my last concern had to do with kind of what councilmember Finn was asking about is, I don't want to say override of the AI, but if there are ways that if it's not quite doing what we expect or wanted it to, can we at some point adjust it somehow? The, the flow, the pattern, whatever it is that we see that it's not quite maybe what, what it's thinking or how we're thinking. There is a way you mentioned.
Absolutely. So the, there's, these systems are able to collect more data than we could possibly process ourselves. And so that's one of the big advantages is it crunches that data, analyzes it, and it presents the results of the analysis. Then we can, we can look at it and make judgments. Okay, is it, is it maybe a little too, too weighted to the southbound direction? Maybe we want to give a little more favor to the northbound direction? How's this queuing operating from the, the Caltrans ramp signal to the nearby city signal? And so we're going to be able to look at those performance reports and look at them and say, okay, does this make sense from, from the driver's perspective? And if it does, great. If it doesn't, we can make adjustments. It, it's a, it's a system that the user, the operator can get involved in and help to optimize.
And I appreciate that because that, as you know, as you've seen it, it's got so many factors involved where you can look at it and, you know, the machine will see and calculate that, but it's not looking at the total picture. And, you know, that was one of my concerns, but I'm comfortable with that. And I'm actually pretty excited about this. We've talked to our public, you know, there's only so many things we can do, like you said. And this is one of those, you know, kind of out of the box thinking that we can, we can adapt to that. We hear all about timing. Oh, the timing's off in Highland Springs. Can you get it re-timed? Can you make them go longer? And we've gone around and around on that. So this is something that is a blessing in disguise where we can kind of let it go and, and do its modifications and its adaptability and so forth. So I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten White?
Yes, sir. I have, I might be getting into the weeds a little bit, but I have a couple of questions for you. So it seems like the 9.2 million that we're asking is for the build, not necessarily what maintenance looks like moving forward, what this person managing it might look like. Do you anticipate the need for a full-time employee that is monitoring traffic such as the traffic person he alluded to? I know that would come probably down the line, but is there a point at which that comes in that we're thinking about that now?
Yeah, the intent of the AI is to replace human capacity. There will be a component for maintenance that we already experienced on our outdated system. However, we have recently started training some of the streets crew to be techs for traffic signal. And I'm sure we can continue that and mature that into this type of system.
All right. Very good. I just want to make sure we're, as we start to go down that path, we're looking at it. A question as well is with the AI adaptive overlay you mentioned, and you stated that it can detect emergency vehicles. My husband is a first responder, and so oftentimes I hear like, your lights are not changing and they don't pick me up. So can you explain a little bit further on how this can impact public safety and response times for public safety? Because that is also one of the things that I hear often is that they can't get through these arterials fast enough and they get stuck at times.
Yeah, so one of the recommendations, the system upgrades that are a part of the study is a new emergency vehicle preemption system. The, the system that's out there now is dated. It, it works with a line of sight. So the, you know, the emitter on the truck sends a signal out to the traffic signal. Traffic signal goes, hey, fire truck, ambulance coming. I got to get them a green. If it can't see, if this, if the fire truck can't see that signal, then that, then that preemption doesn't work. What the recommended, recommended system does is it works with GPS and it's able to work without line of sight, doesn't depend on it. And it can, it looks at the route that the vehicle is on and it turns the signal screen even ahead of the signal that it's at. So it doesn't just, so it's, it's aligning up the arterial, you know, for greens downstream, not one signal ahead, but multiple signals ahead. Super important on like Highland Springs where the arterial goes under the freeway and you have the, the freeway blocking line of sight above, and, and this is going to be able to do that. The communication system along the corridors will also be able to relay those signals from signal to signal even without the emergency vehicle preemption system in place. So a lot of opportunities to improve that functionality.
This is probably, in my opinion, the biggest impact that this does for us. Currently, we have no fire station south of the freeway, so all of our responses are going through these main arterials to the south of the freeway to respond to large senior populations. And if they are blocked, their response times are less and time is tissue from a nurse. As soon as I can get emergency response there, the better impacted is for our community. So for me, this is absolutely huge with regards to our response times. So thank you for that. And I had a question about the connectivity and you answered that, so I thank you for that as well. The other component I had is as we're moving forward and the technology comes into play, how do upgrades to that technology work? As anything with AI, it's requiring software. And how do those continue to update or are they automatically refreshed? Who's the IT behind that? And kind of how does all of that work? Do you have to get a service plan? How, how does that work?
That's exactly right. It's a service plan similar to, you know, the, the, you know, your update on your Droid or your Windows update or, or that sort of thing. It's a, it's a little more hands-on, but when you buy the system, they have different levels of service plans. They even have service plans that include that human monitoring from a remote location. So when updates happen, they're part of the service plan. You're paying for that through the licensing and, and those are passed down from the manufacturer or vendor to the, to the agency. There would be monitoring when that upgrade takes place just to make sure it happens in a good way. But, but those, those kinds of things are now, you know, part of the daily operation of these systems.
Perfect. And then I think I have two more questions. As new development comes in, then this technology would be what they are implementing if they have required improvements?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Once we have our base package including what, what software and equipment will be implementing, it'll be required for any, any new development, whether upgrading existing signals or installing new, new signals at new locations.
If there are potential developments that are coming in that require upgrading of current signals, will that drop the price of what we have quoted?
No, because the timing for us to solidify what equipment we're using will probably, most likely not sync with when they upgrade their, their signals.
Okay. And then last question that I have is, we looked at a phased approach. You mentioned three-year timeframe between now and then. So are we looking at realistically the implementation on Highland Springs being four years out? Or are we looking at two years out? What's the timeframe we're looking at?
One year.
One year.
For Highland Springs.
One year for Highland Springs. And what would you anticipate for phase two? I know I'm projecting and there could be a lot of things that come in there, but what would be the best guess?
Yeah, so phase two would be the second year.
Second year.
Yeah, so Highland Springs is phase one, year one. And, and Beaumont and a couple of those east-west corridors, that's phase two, year two. And then Oak Valley and a couple of, of Stragler Intersections, those are phase three, year three.
So ideally this time next year, we see improvements on Highland Springs.
We'll be able to make that presentation that Rob did showing the vehicle moving along the corridor.
All right. That's what I, that's what I, state of the cities in a year from now.
Wow. Right there.
I do want to add that Jason is making that promise.
Okay, I have nothing further. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the, I, I do agree with councilmember White with our, our partners to the, to the east would be great. Would we get the same or potentially get the same partnership with Caltrans as well on their signal lights as far as funding? Or is that not?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
We're including Caltrans in these signal lights because they're, right?
We are.
So would they also help to cover funding for their signal lights?
They will not. This would be a city-led project. There may be grant opportunities. I'm not aware of any right now.
Okay. Okay. So does Caltrans have requirements? In other words, would they have to sign off on the plans and, and sign off on the equipment? And they'll have to do all that, correct, before we move forward with our bids?
Yeah, that, that is correct. There'll be a process to go through Caltrans and I think Jason can probably elaborate more on. Yeah, so, oh, thanks. The, the Caltrans permit process is, can happen in parallel with the city engineering and procurement process. So once this is approved, we would want to coordinate with Caltrans pretty immediately to say, hey, here's, the city has a plan to, to make these signals operate better. They're going to say, okay, here's our requirements. One of them is going to be to pull a permit for any installations that happen at the Caltrans traffic signals. They're going to want to see the system, the documentation, what's being installed, where it's being installed, how it's going to work. This study's going to be handed to them, plus we're going to need to put together those design plans that reflect that. The city process can be happening the whole time. The city can finish up the engineering plans, procure a contractor and a vendor, install. Once the, once the Caltrans releases a permit, then, then those systems can be installed at, at the Caltrans ramps.
Okay. You indicated we have roughly $2 million in this budget? So 1.7 does phase one and phase two. Is that a possibility?
It does. We, we considered that. It doesn't include any contingency or does your estimate include contingency?
There's a, there's a percentage of contingency in there just to deal with the rising costs of things. So we tried to build that in.
So those, I'm sure Jason did a really good job of providing those values, but there is still a lot of unknowns at this time. So there is opportunity for us to maybe pull one and three together. there is opportunity for us to maybe pull one and three together, or if the, the bids come back, or when we, when we select the actual equipment, it tightens up the cost estimate appropriately and we can, we can do more phases. But I, I would just, um, exercise caution on how much we can do.
Understand, but if we can do the, the design to have, you know, we, council's always supported shovel-ready projects, maybe there's a, an opportunity to do that, um, just so that we can move on to these phases quickly, because this is very exciting. And, and as you've said, you know, the, the increase in capacity is going to cost too much, so we have to be more efficient with what we have. And this is right down that line and we, we could be heroes if you can get this done, uh, really quickly. So appreciate that. That's all the questions I have. Mayor Protim Boyd?
Yeah, I just, uh, you sparked my, I wrote down grants. Are there any, uh, type of other requirements, CQ or anything else that we see that we would have to bounce through for this or to apply for grants if they do become available?
Difficult.
I know, I'm trying to ask you to look into a crystal ball. At this point, no then, that you are aware of.
Not that I'm aware of. If we find a state grant, we would have to do CQ, but I believe that this would be a, um, category, categorical exemption. You probably have more experience with.
Yeah, it's, um, super limited in, in, uh, its impact to the environment. It's, it's basically, uh, working within a cabinet, working within, uh, conduits that are already there. So it, it, like you said, categorical exemption, yeah.
Then any federal funding would obviously require a NEPA, um, and probably follow the exact same filing status of categorical exemption.
Very good. I just don't want to land in any other position. I know you don't either.
But some of those processes may slow that down, as you know, as we're experiencing with other projects.
Councilmember White?
Uh, so in our presentation from RCTC and the discussion that we've had at RCTC about moving forward, their phase one was to synchronize our signals with the freeway signals. If you haven't already, should probably reach out to RCTC, see if they want to, um, partner with us on it. Maybe get some more money that way. Thanks.
Any further questions? Something we have? Should we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, to direct city staff to move forward with the design of all phases and implementation of phase one in agreement with the smart technology at traffic signals feasibility study.
I'll second.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Boyd?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the work. Okay. So that brings us back to our public hearings. Item I-1. Public hearing, uh, First Amendment to fiscal year 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan.
Yeah, so tonight presenting that item will be your, um, senior management analyst or actually, uh, recently promoted public works manager, uh, Sue Foxworth.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have one slide for you today. I have also printed a change log for you that reflects, um, this presentation. On the screen, you have before you the First Amendment to the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2026 through 2030. Staff is proposing three new projects. The first two CIPs listed are part of the request to split CD-03, which is listed below as a budget change in the amount of 1.6 million. The majority of the acquisition stage is complete, so staff is requesting to split these projects to provide a clear understanding of the specific work being done on each project. The building rehabilitation at 105 Sixth Street and 514 California, which will now be CIP F-2602 and F-2603. Next, R-26-13 Bicycle and Pedestrian Path is the third new CIP project, which is in part of the SV-8821 grant agreement that was just awarded. The city's required cash match is $57,050, which will be funded through AQMD. There are five other budget change requests listed. Potrero Interchange, staff is requesting additional funds to resolve items from Caltrans. R-25-15 Downtown Revitalization Feasibility Study, staff is requesting to increase the budget to cover the higher bid response. These additional funds would be transferred from PO4 General Funds in the amount of $600,000. For Wastewater 2401, city staff is requesting to transfer funds from Wastewater 09 Mesa Lift Station as this project is being closed. To also reallocate funds from Wastewater 2607 as other funds became available for that CIP and to add recycled water diff funds. These additional funds will help with the overall improvements for the wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater 2607 centrifuges will add approximately $830,000 from bond proceeds. For closed projects, as stated earlier, Mesa Lift Station will be closed and funds transferred to Wastewater 2401 in the amount of $475,000. And with the one name change, with the splitting of the downtown revitalization projects, staff is proposing to change the name or the CIP name to CD-03 Downtown Revitalization as shown here on this slide. And last but not least, a cleanup item, staff is requesting to combine these two projects' fundings, T-19 and T-2501 into one project, T-2501 Beaumont City and Transit Yard as initially intended. In addition, uh, Mayor and Council, I would also like to put in record another cleanup item not listed in the staff report, to omit FO7 Past Area Business Resource Center Building Repair CIP project. This project was never moved forward or funded, so staff would like to remove it from the CIP list. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:30. Nicole, do we have any public comments?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing at 7:30 and open it up for council comments, council discussion. Councilmember White?
Um, could you bring your slide back up? Or whoever can bring it back up? So two questions. On the last one, the FO7 that we're removing, what was the dollar amount on that one?
$325,000.
Okay. And then on the, there was, wasn't a whole lot of information on removing or, I'm sorry, redirecting $600,000 from the Sports Park Field Lighting and Field Expansion. Why don't we need that $600,000 there anymore?
Sure. So bids came back for construction and they're very favorable to the, the city, even with, um, uh, contingency and a little extra, there's plenty in, in that project.
Okay. Um, and then the last question I had, we're, we're changing the name from revitalization, Grace Building, Real Estate Acquisition to Downtown Revitalization. Does that, um, I mean, we set that money aside and one of the purposes was for real estate acquisition. This doesn't stop us from still using with the new name, still being able to budget for real estate acquisition?
If the intent of council is to continue to acquire real estate, I would leave the name Downtown Revitalization and Real Estate Acquisition so that it's very clear.
That was, yeah, that was my concern.
Or create its own project and council can program a certain dollar amount towards real estate acquisition so that we, as staff, have a clear understanding of what we can spend where. That, that's the whole purpose of unpackaging CD-03.
So, yeah, okay. So, so my question is, for example, if a, a retail building on Beaumont Avenue became available, um, and we, we decided it made sense for us to purchase it in our downtown revitalization program, whether or not we have real estate acquisition in the name of the CIP project will, or will, you're recommending that we keep that in there?
I, I'm recommending that if that's what council wants to do, we keep it in the name. Um, one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight is the downtown revitalization plan. We have some, um, contracts that we want to award at the next meeting after we talk about the plan refresher tonight. I don't know that there's enough money in CD-03 to cover potentially all that council wants to do in the plan and leave some left over for real estate acquisition. We would, we would just need to be very clear from a staff perspective, how much does council want to leave for real estate acquisition?
So it might be helpful, at least for me, to see the history of that because I think originally when we approved it, we were looking at $1 million for lights, $5 million for acquisition of real estate. And since then, we've, we've already redirected some of those funds to other, um, items, correct?
We have spent some of them on things like the Grace Building and the study, the, um, real estate acquisition of, I'd have to go back through the log, but I believe the dry cleaners purchase came out of that.
Didn't we also use some for the police department purchase as well?
The land?
I, I would have to go back through that.
Okay, and that's sort of, before we decide or, or I give input as to what we should leave as far as real estate acquisition, I would like to see sort of a history of where, where that originally started and, and what is left and how much is going where.
We can give you a project accounting sheet. Absolutely. Um, I don't know that the PD was, that was used to purchase for the PD. I think we used, um, fund balance. I think council's direction was to not use it, but I'll have to go back and look.
Okay, but I do believe remembering you, you guys coming back to us and asking to re, redirect some of those, that funding, am I not remembering this correctly?
Let us bring back a project accounting sheet.
Perfect. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm not opposing this because of that.
No.
Um, I'm, I'm still okay with what you're doing here. I just would like more information.
Okay.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just on that note, so if this were approved, leaving the 1.6 in there like that with that new name and during our discussion on, um, the refresher for the downtown, we decide that we're not going to spend what we initially thought, we would need to go back and reprogram the money that's here somewhere else if we decide not to go forward with that. Because what we're talking about later comes out of this fund, in other words.
If council, after the refresher tonight of the plan, if council still supports the plan as it was adopted last year, then the next step would be to issue a contract award at the next meeting for the, um, the scope that we've put out already. So we would need that.
And that would come out of this fund? This would be CD-03?
Correct. Right? Robert, it comes out of, I haven't seen the staff report yet for the CD-03.
I'm just saying.
We're talking about the contract award on September 2nd.
Yeah, so we do need more additional funds for that one. Sue, where, where are we pulling those funds from?
For what, which contract again?
The downtown revitalization.
It's coming through, uh, gosh, I have to look. I don't have it on me. I'd have to get back to you on that.
And, and the reason I ask is, is if we do decide to go forward and we keep it like this, but we change our mind later this evening on, on that, um, then that'll open this to be reprogrammed somewhere else if we wish, I'm assuming. That, that was my question. It is coming from general fund, $600,000 from general fund and not CD-03.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So the $600 for CD-03 would remain in there regardless of the contract award next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Okay.
Is that the balance of CD-03 right now is $600,000 with the adjustments that we're making to divide them out?
The proposed budget of CD-03 would be $1,096,000.
And the 1.6 is going to, I'm sorry, I'm.
The, the 1.6 is being divided into the two new projects.
Okay. Uh, that would be F-26-02 Dry Cleaner Building is what I'm calling it, and then F-26-03, the biz hub.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
So the 1.6 goes to that. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's what I was. I got it.
Okay, then, so, um, I'm trying to, because I got confused here a little bit. So the $600,000 from the Sports Park, um, is going to the downtown revitalization, correct? The $600,000 from the lighting is going to?
Is going to the feasibility study.
Right, which is, uh, R-25-15. Okay. The remaining 1.1, $1,096,000 for CD-03 remains in that account. It does not move, doesn't go, right? Okay. So the, so we'll have the, the 1.6 for two projects, but as I recall, I think one project's going to take about 1.5 to do?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the dry cleaners building. That's the refurbishment that we need to do.
Okay. Then the, I'm sorry if we've already gone over this, I apologize, but the $800,000 for Potrero is coming from general fund. Is that from reserves? Is that, that's coming, that's $800,000 from reserves that we're going to backfill for the Potrero?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my questions for right now. Councilmember White?
Jessica just triggered something for me. So we're putting 1.6 million into the dry cleaners, 1. what, what was in? 1.5. And we purchased the dry cleaners for how much?
$350,000.
So we will be in it for just under $2 million?
Correct.
Do we have an assessment on what that property's worth with the improvements?
The appraisal when we purchased it was roughly around 325. We'd have to get a current appraisal, but it would not hit $2 million.
Okay.
And we could have it appraised after all the improvements are in to see if it reaches.
Okay, but then we've already spent the money.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to sort of raise that because she raised it.
And it, it gives me heartburn. It keeps me up at night. I'm thinking, oh my goodness, honestly. Exactly, exactly. I don't know. What if we did, um, in order to get this whole thing rolling, what if we created the, we, we just left downtown revitalization slash real estate in CD-03 and just renamed it to that? And then as I, I'm not sure, do we have a current CIP open for the Grace Building?
We do not. This, this would create the Grace Building or, uh?
This one doesn't have that in there.
Yeah. It would eliminate the Grace Building.
It would eliminate the Grace Building.
It would eliminate.
From the CIP.
From the CIP.
Correct.
For, and then future discussion, whatever leads from there. Okay. What do you think about leaving it with real estate? I mean, I don't know if you, you could do anything with $1.
Right.
Uh, no, I, like I said, I'd like to sort of see where all the numbers lay out before.
Okay, before even keeping the name, just wait. So don't, don't make any changes with CD-03 right now then. Don't change the name. Everything else we can potentially move forward with as. Everything else we can potentially move forward with is-
As long as doing that doesn't delay moving forward on any of the projects that you want us to, to move forward on?
If it's just a name change, it, it won't. But if we do not create F-26-03 and F-26-02, then those projects can't move forward.
Correct.
And we're ready to move forward on those projects now, right now?
That is correct.
So do we have a-
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, let me make sure I'm on the right one. Waive the full reading and adopt by title only resolution of City Council, City of Beaumont, amending the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year '26 to '30. You may amend my motion if you, if you so choose. So that's my motion.
Do we want that amendment amended?
I'll second.
I was wanting for you to modify. Okay.
It wasn't my modification. He was the one talking about it.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
That brings us to item I-2, public hearing introduction of ordinance and resolution to add parking citation penalties, fines to citywide pre-schedule. Mr. Darren, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you? Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight's public hearing item is an ordinance and resolution amending the city's municipal code, chapter 10-08, to update our parking citation penalties. On June 17th, staff presented a comprehensive analysis of Beaumont's fines against 10 neighboring cities. That review showed that our citation amounts are generally lower, which reduces the effectiveness as a deterrent and may contribute to ongoing non-compliance. On July 15th, a public hearing was held on this item where the council requested adjustments, including rounding the fines to even numbers and raising the penalty for unauthorized disabled space parking to $400. The proposed schedule before you tonight reflects those changes that align with Beaumont's fines with the regional averages. Examples include raising expired registration violations to $90, fire lane violations to 100, and handicap violations to 400. While these changes may generate a modest additional revenue, the primary objective is to improve compliance and reduce enforcement strain on our police department. Staff recommends waiving the first reading, approving the ordinance, and resolution adopting the new parking violation and penalty schedule, and return to council for a second reading. With that, I end my presentation and available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:46. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing at 7:46 and open it up for council discussion. Or a motion?
Mayor, I'll move the recommended action.
You have a motion to second? Councilmember Finn, did you have a question or?
No, no, sir.
What was that whole motion again? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes, thank you very much, Darren. That brings us to item I-3, public hearing, first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 10.06 for curb colors to provide authority to the city engineer to paint curb colors for traffic regulations.
Reading again?
It'll be me again.
All right. Déjà vu.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight's item is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 10.06 of the Beaumont Municipal Code to delegate authority to the city engineer to designate curb colors for traffic regulation purposes. This discussion began on July 15th when council directed staff to return with an ordinance granting the city engineer this authority and to establish a $100 citation amount for violations that designated curb colors, particularly around community mailboxes. Currently, curb colors designed require full council action, which can delay timely responses to localized parking and safety issues. Delegating this authority to the city engineer will allow staff to conduct traffic surveys and implement solutions more effectively. And first, enforcement of these curb color regulations will continue under the existing authority of the community development, or community enhancement division and Beaumont Police Department, with these fines set at $100 per violation. This structure is consistent with practices already in place in our surrounding cities. The purpose of this ordinance is to enhance safety, visibility, and access throughout the city by enabling more timely, engineering-based responses to reoccurring parking concerns, particularly in neighborhoods and HOA communities. Staff will roll out curb color designations near community mailboxes and phases, coordinating with the police department and HOAs to prioritize areas with the highest number of complaints. Staff recommends that city council waive the first reading, approve the ordinance by title only, and direct staff to return for a second reading. That concludes my presentation and staff's available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. With that, I will open up the public hearing at 7:49. Nicole, do we have any public comments for this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Then I will close the public hearing at 7:49 and open it up for council discussion or a motion.
Mayor, can I add some additional information? I just want to, before, before we go too far into this item, I want to make sure that council understands that should council adopt this, our team will not be able to go out in full force and start painting curbs. We will need to plan it and program it. We'll hit the hotspots first.
Okay.
Possibly Sundance, since this is where it initiated.
Right.
And we'll coordinate with the police department on where they see the highest enforcement needs. But this will definitely need to be a phased approach. When Robert's team is in the area, they'll paint a curb. It will not be one full sweep across the city.
Really quickly, too, I just want to thank staff. This came up at a, one of my mayor's meetings, and Captain Walter brought this up and indicated that we could look into that. That was merely a few months ago, and here we are with an ordinance. So thank you, staff, very much for that, for their effort.
One last quick question.
Sure.
What color paint the mailbox access?
It'll be white. So, so mailboxes will be designated white, and then they'll be stenciled with the Beaumont Municipal Code enforcing it.
I'll just make the motion if there's further discussion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to waive the first full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Beaumont, California, amending chapter 10.06 curb colors to provide authority to the city engineer to paint curb colors for traffic regulation and adopt the resolution and approve by title only, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beaumont, adopting a new parking penalty for parking in front of the community mailbox.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. That brings us to item I-4, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance establishing a procedure for property owner objections to propose sewer fees or special assessments.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item references the recently enacted Assembly Bill 2257, and as such, I'm going to turn it over to our legal team for discussion and a presentation.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, and citizens of the city of Beaumont. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to present the proposed ordinance to you. As a foundational matter, though, I think that since we're going to be talking about procedures that supplement Proposition 218, it may be a benefit for the community members that are watching or present to understand what Proposition 218 was. So Proposition 218 was a constitutional amendment and really had two components. There's a substantive component to Proposition 218, and there's a procedural component to Proposition 218. And we'll talk about the procedural components because that's what AB 2257 supplemented. By way of background, Proposition 218 applies to property-related fees and charges and special assessments. And what the implementation of Proposition 218 did was provide notice of any new or increased rates or charges or assessments, provided the opportunity for property owners to protest those newer or increased charges. And then there were certain hearing requirements, which included to receive the protest ballots, to tabulate those ballots, and make a determination of whether or not there was a majority protest. If there was no majority protest, then the new rates or increased rates could be implemented. So, as we get into the presentation, I'll go through the background of why the legislature enacted Proposition, or AB 2257. Also, what the supplemental rate procedures are, what the public participation requirements are in the objection process. So that will illustrate what will change if the council elects to enact the ordinance. And then finally, implementation of the ordinance, again, if the council elects to implement the ordinance. And I want to make sure that it's clear that this is within the discretion of the council as to whether or not you implement these procedures. So why don't we get into the presentation? So a little bit of background. After the enactment of Proposition 218, there were lawsuits that challenged the rates and charges, and as you know, that litigation is expensive and create, can create financial uncertainty for cities, special districts who rely on those rates and charges to provide services. The agencies in, during the course of that litigation or those litigations, argued that Proposition 218, the protest and ballot assessment procedures are required administrative remedies that must be exhausted prior to bringing in a lawsuit. Now, what does that mean, the exhaustion of administrative remedies? Basically, what it means is you let us know if there's a problem and give us the opportunity to try to resolve that problem prior to going to court. The courts disagreed with the arguments being made and said that the exhaustion of administrative remedies are not required prior to following a lawsuit which challenges rates and assessments that are subject to Proposition 218. So in response to that judicial determination, the legislature enacted AB 2257, which are the supplemental procedural requirements that may be enacted by the legislative body. What this does is it will limit legal challenges to proposed rates and assessments if we enact these, these measures and if the objection process is not followed. So, what are the supplemental rate-setting procedures, public participation, and objections? So, for proposed sewer fees and assessments, there's written justif, the new, written just, the justification for the new or increased fee will be set forth on the city's website with a link that will also be provided in the written notice to the property owner. There's a 45-day review period. Now, that's, may seem familiar to you because Prop 218 also has a 45-day review period. Here is the additional layer. There, there's an objection process. So people, property owners, rate payers can submit written objections. They must be received before the close of the public, the Prop 218 hearing process. The objection must state the specific legal and procedural concerns with the new rates or charges. They must be timely submitted objections, and the agency is given an opportunity to respond to those objections. Why this matters? It matters because the process allows a person to raise concerns early before the decisions are final and helps the city address and resolve those issues upfront. Therefore, no need to go to court. No objection equals no lawsuit. Under the new government code section, if you do not submit a written objection, give us the opportunity to respond. We have to do that in writing, justifying the rate or charge, then you cannot later challenge the fee or assessment in court. This provides stability to everybody, but also gives the public the opportunity to come in and speak their piece, give us evidence as to why the rates or charges shouldn't be implemented. If you don't follow these written objection procedures, then the city will have a defense that says you failed to exhaust your administrative remedies. So why might you want to implement the supplemental rate-setting procedures? This is in addition to, so this is additional notice that, above and beyond what's currently required. It encourages submission of public comments during the public hearing process. It gives local agencies the opportunity to address those concerns prior to implementing or adopting the new rates. It limits litigation to those that timely filed objections. It helps avoid unnecessary cases in the court process, and it lays out all the facts and arguments before a judge gets involved so that we know what we're, when we go before a judge, we know what we're going to be arguing about. And it limits the evidence to be considered during the litigation to the information that was submitted to the legislative body during the rate-setting process. Our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance implementing these additional and supplemental rate-setting procedures. And a lot of people are visual, so this, this outline kind of shows you, you know, when we implement the rates, there's an engineer's report, there's the 45-day protest process, but there's also the objection process. And then there's two options. We can either do it in one step when we go to the hearing, or we can two-step it. We can hear the objections and then have the final determination at a separate meeting. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Phaedra. Nicole, do we have any public comments on these, this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
There are no callers, so I will-
So, are, did you open the public hearing?
Opened the public hearing at 8 o'clock. We have no callers, so I will close the public hearing at 8 o'clock and open it up for council comments.
To the comments that were made in the presentation, practically speaking, you know, our office has defended many Proposition 218 lawsuits. There, as, as Ms. Norton mentioned, they're very expensive to defend. They're typically class action lawsuits, and what would happen under 218 is the way 218 is set up, when you adopt rates, sewer rates, people can submit a protest, and literally it can be a one-line document that just says, "I protest the rate increase," right? This process allows people to state in detail what their objection is. So under 218, what would happen is typically you don't get a majority protest, you just get, you know, a number of them without any explanation of what they're objecting to or what they're protesting. Then the agency adopts the, the higher rates, and then three or four years later, they get with, hit with a lawsuit, and they, and if they lose, then they have to pay back millions, if not tens of millions of dollars in rates that were charged. So it can be very disruptive to a public agency that's providing property-related services like sewer, water, et cetera. So this requires, if you adopt this ordinance, it really protects the city, but it also protects the public because it requires them to specify what their objection is, not just protest, but what their objection is. And then it gives you an opportunity to consider the objection. If we got it wrong, we can make the correction before we adopt the rates, and it just avoids the, the surprise two, three years later of getting hit with a lawsuit that can be very costly.
Thank you very much. Any council comments? I'll take a motion.
I will move to waive the full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city of Beaumont, California, establishing a procedure of property owner objections to proposed sewer fees or special assessments.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Thank you very much. That brings us to item J2. Real quick, looking at item J2 through J7, they are contract awards for professional service agreements, there are amendment to those, to some agreements, there is a public works agreement, there's a contract renewal. So, looking at those, if council is comfortable, we can take J through through J7, or we can have anyone pulled for discussion, or we can discuss each one of them separately. However, I do have one clarification that we want to make on item J4.
Correct, Mayor. So, on item J4, the recommended action says, "Consider a four-year term general service agreement." That should read, "Consideration of a three-year term," which is what is in the actual contract, which is what council would be approving. So, the contract is correct. The staff report did not state the correct term, but the contract is correct.
So, I just want to make sure, if council is comfortable with that, we can do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to take each one of those items separately. You're okay with that? Sure. Sure. What's that? Yeah, that's fine. We'll go ahead and take a, is it 10-minute break? Is that okay? All right, take a 10-minute break.
All right.
Okay. And we're back. So, we were going to look at potentially combining or doing-
I'm okay with combining those, if you want to.
Okay. So, if it's okay with council, what I'll do is I'll make a motion to approve, as recommended by staff, items J2 through J7, with the modification on J4 for a three-year contract instead of four years.
Do you need to see the public comment?
Oh, thank you very much. I was just testing you. Have any public comments on any of those items?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Then I'll second that.
Thank you. Have roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. So, that brings us to item J8, Downtown Revitalization Plan.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
IT, can we switch to my screen? So, this is a presentation, however, most of the images were included in the staff report, so I apologize that this wasn't provided to you ahead of time. The intent of tonight's presentation is to revisit, elevate 2050 Beaumont's bold and forward-thinking downtown revitalization plan. This comprehensive plan developed by GHD Engineering in collaboration with Linda S. Cognalton and Associates envisions a vibrant, walkable, and economically resilient downtown by the year 2050. The plan lays the groundwork for transforming our historic core into a thriving mixed-use district, one that blends residential, retail, dining, and cultural experiences in a way that honors our past while embracing the future. You can clearly tell that this is not about streets, so. Key elements of this plan include revitalization hubs like Grace Avenue, the Arbors Dining Hub, mobility improvements such as pedestrian-friendly streetscapes and roundabouts, architectural and signage guidelines that preserve our character while enhancing visual appeal, zoning reforms, and business incentives to unlock development and potential and attract investment. Most importantly, this plan reflects the voice of our community, shaped through workshop, stakeholder interviews, public engagement, and together we're setting the stage for a dynamic, inclusive, and economically vibrant downtown, a place where people want to live, work, and gather for generations to come. We're moving towards what I feel is the most important, the streets. So, I'm going to revisit, obviously, key elements from economic development and planning. At any time you interject, or any time you say, skip ahead, I'm absolutely willing. So, Grace Avenue Gateway, the purpose here is to envision a welcoming entrance to Beaumont, downtown Beaumont, setting a tone for a revitalized corridor. Key features include landmark signage and gateway arch, enhanced landscaping and lighting, public art, and wayfinding elements designed to create a strong sense of arrival. The impacts is establishes, excuse me, identity and encourages visitors to explore downtown. Again, these are excerpts from the study that's included in your attachment. Obviously, it's 240 pages reduced to just some bullet points. Two, the Arbors Dining Hub, purpose is a vibrant culinary destination that anchors the social and economic activity along Sixth Street. Key features are outdoor dining, patios and shaded seating, clusters of residence, restaurants, excuse me, cafes and food trucks, pedestrian plazas and evening lighting, live music or event space potential. Impact is drives foot traffic, supports local business, and creates a lively atmosphere. Civic Center Zone, the purpose, it's a central area of government services, public events, and civic pride. Key features are City Hall, Community Center, Civic Plaza with seating, trees, and public art, safe pedestrian crossing, and transit access, opportunities for community events and markets. The impact is strength. It strengthens the connection between residential and local government while activating public Mixed-use residential areas, the purpose is to bring housing and daily life into the heart of downtown, supporting a 24/7 community. Key features are apartments or townhomes above retail ground-floor shops, services and cafes, walkable blocks with street trees and lighting, parking integrated behind or beneath, excuse me, beneath buildings. The impact is it increases downtown vibrancy, supports local businesses, and provides housing Pedestrian-friendly streetscape, the purpose is to make Sixth Street safe, comfortable, and attractive for walking and biking. Key features are wide sidewalks with benches and shade, protected bike lanes, decorative crosswalks and curb extensions, street trees, planters, and lighting. The impact is it encourages walking, improves safety, and enhances the overall experience. All right, roundabouts and mobility enhancements, the purpose is to improve traffic flow and safety while enhancing the street's character. Key features are compact roundabouts at key intersections, specifically Californian Sixth and then Palmen Sixth. Improved pedestrian crossing, gateway landscaping with roundabouts. The impact is it reduces congestion and collisions while creating visual interest. Architectural and signage guidelines, the purpose, to ensure cohesive, attractive development that reflects Beaumont's identity. Key features are design standards for building facades and materials, historic preservation elements, coordinated signage and lighting, facade improvements, incentive. The impact is it creates a unified look and feel, enhancing the downtown's appeal. All right, so, the study and the staff report have significant, like, images, but they're all kind of cropped. So, what I did is I overlaid them into Google Earth, so we can have a more interactive presentation. I overlaid the image, we can graphically see. I overlaid the image, we can graphically see. Graphically see where those are. Are you able to share my other screen? Boss, no. Just a minute, sorry. Okay, good. So I will be panning. If you get motion sickness, let me know. I will try to pan and then stop so we can discuss it. You're seeing Beaumont. The red represents the downtown revitalization area. The green, which is kind of faint, maybe able to change that to a different color. Oops. Apologize. There we go. Blue is the truck routes, proposed truck routes permitted within the city of Beaumont. So again, red is the downtown revitalization study area. We'll start on Sixth Street and move from east to west. So as you enter Sixth Street, you'll see a downtown Beaumont arch. The location is irrelevant right now, it's just a placeholder. The future designer will place this appropriately. And unfortunately, for this segment from Interstate 10 to California, there was no graphic. So I overlaid the street cross-section and I'll just walk you through what that looks like. So from I-10 on-ramp to California, the road will look as shown. It'll be two lanes with one suicide lane in the middle and parallel parking on both sides. It'll have enhanced curb extensions at the intersections to protect the parallel parking curbs and also provide pedestrian, better pedestrian visibility through those intersections. We will try to eliminate the power pole that's shown in the graphic if we can. So that occurs, like I said, from the I-10 on-ramp to California. From California, there will be, as proposed, a roundabout, significant roundabout. The roundabout here will be a traffic calming measure, allowing vehicles to slow as they enter into the enhanced pedestrian streetscape. It is tan, but I will make sure that it's not tan. You'll also notice Grace Avenue is in there. We can refer to the slide in staff report for those amenities there. It's shown just for reference. As we move from California to Beaumont Avenue, we do have renderings of this street, and you can see it's enhanced by landscaping. It'll be two lanes with parallel parking on either side. And again, the intersections will have extended curb to protect the parallel parking and also enhance visibility and pedestrian safety. So again, we're moving west, east, easterly. We're at Euclid now, and again, it's the same concept, two lanes, parallel parking, enhanced landscaping. Beaumont. From Beaumont to, sorry. From Beaumont to Palm is where we get into very enhanced changes, dramatic changes from what we're normally used to. Again, the same enhanced landscaping along the parkway, parallel parking, but also included in this section is diagonal parking where these trees are. So these trees occur maybe every other parking stall or maybe two parking stalls in here. You can see in this little sliver what it looks like. I apologize, there's no real good graphic of showing that parallel parking. But the intent is to offer the parked median as a place to host events in the street and then also additional parking for downtown when events are not occurring. So as we continue to move easterly, we're at Maple, and now we start transitioning back from the enhanced parked median to another roundabout. Roundabout at Palm. And again, just like the one at California, this roundabout is designed to enhance both visually but then also offer a calming effect just by the use, just by it being a roundabout in general. This is designed as a system. Because we have median parking, we really want to be able to control the velocity of cars through here. That's why the roundabouts are being proposed, both for safety of that intersection, but they just have a natural calming effect of the vehicles. And as a system, this is really what it needs to be. If you were to replace these with traffic signals, it would be an unsafe condition because as soon as the light is green or remains green, those vehicles will be traveling at the normal posted speed limit as opposed to slowing down as they're entering into the roundabouts. Again, continuing easterly, you'll have another Beaumont arch. This one may be different. I'm just using the graphic from the study. The lane configuration for this segment from Palm to Pennsylvania Avenue will be very close to what you see here, with the only change will be, again, enhanced landscaping in the parkway. This, well, there's no suicide lane here. It will be four lanes and then an additional parallel parking intermittently through this segment. So not a very substantial change from what you see there. Pennsylvania is where the study ends, and there is no change from Pennsylvania to Highland Springs. It's the commercial corridor, four lanes, kind of as shown currently. So going back to Beaumont Avenue, we'll start south and work north. Again, some type of arch or entering downtown signage. We've already discussed the interchange there. Enhanced curb, enhanced pedestrian crossing. And then we come from Sixth Street on Beaumont Avenue all the way to Seventh, Eighth Street. Seventh Street, excuse me, Beaumont from Sixth to Seventh is the downtown enhanced pedestrian football, football, pedestrian foot traffic, really incentivizing the ability to cross the street, to host events there without the parking though. So similar to Sixth Street in this area, just without the median parking. So again, enhanced landscaping, two lanes, and then a series of parallel parking, some very defined bike lanes through there. And I believe, I believe this is the design, excuse me, I apologize for panning so much, but this design continues all the way to the northerly extension of the plan along Beaumont Avenue, which is Eleventh Street, I think. I'll confirm that right now. Yes, Eleventh Street. So at the north end of that, you will have, again, another arch signifying that you're entering the downtown zone or downtown area. Okay, I'm going to transition back to my slides. I only have one or two left, one left, I believe. Okay, so next steps. The next steps is, the plan provides a schedule for implementation, which is broken into phases.
Robert, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Can we just change the view? We have presenter view up. Thank you.
It's better you don't want to read what I'm saying. The phasing starts, so there's phasing. This is a timetable that you're seeing in the graphic. Jeremy? It's going great, by the way. Thank you, Jeremy. All right, so the graphic you're seeing on the screen is a proposed timeline, which has phases. The phases are the red, orange, less orange, and yellow categories at the top there. The phasing starts in 2025 and continues into 2045. The streetscape project is proposed to start in Phase One with pedestrian lighting and Sixth Street improvements. Beaumont Avenue and alley improvements are Phase Two, which represents approximately 2030 to 2034 timeline. Staff is ready to move the plan to the preliminary design phase for the street and streetscape design. The scope of the preliminary design includes several investigation studies. These studies are to justify the proposed design. They're not justifying alternatives. So if counsel in the proposed design wishes to have the roundabouts, the study will justify what design elements and sizes and criteria will be needed to support those roundabouts. The same is true of right-of-way that we would need, utility, coordination, geotechnical, and so on. Additionally, in that scope is the design options. It'll be a preliminary design report, which they compile everything into a nice report for digestion. And it'll have, you know, introduction, project features and design criteria, street improvements, sidewalk, pedestrian, and ADA plans, intersection design, street furniture plans, monument and overhead signs. A whole, you know, it's a robust study, and that'll be presented pending counsel's direction tonight, next meeting, September 2nd. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Robert. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert, can you pull your presentation back up? My question is in reference to where we get the roundabout there off of California and Sixth. And we have proposed truck routes to stay away from that. Can you zoom out to where it showed those routes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because what I've noticed lately is when we have a train going through it on California and it clears out, that intersection at California and Sixth gets very busy as all those cars clear through. And so I just want to make sure a truck's not going to try to continue to go north, hit that roundabout, and have struggles getting through there, especially it being oval-shaped. And so I'm not, you know, let's see, so. And I don't know where they're coming from, but I see a good number of semis that go north on California, take a left, and then they head towards the freeway to either get on the 10 or get on the 60 and go westbound. So we need to make sure that we have a route for that. And then also, I've noticed lately there's a good number of cars that are on Sixth Street in front of City Hall, just east of the Beaumont Avenue interchange. And they're trying to run through town to get out, either going south to Hemet San Jacinto or running down Sixth Street to get on the freeway as well. And so that gets back to at times. And so should we do that, and I think it looks fantastic, is what was it going to do then to Fifth Street if people are trying to go around that and use that instead? So if somebody, let's say, is where your cursor is here on the east end and running down Fifth Street West to bypass, you know, our improvements on Sixth, continue up kind of northwest, I'm sorry, keep going further west to California, then they're going to probably, you know, maybe bypass this and then bottleneck here to try to run and get the freeway up here on the left. And so I just want to make sure that if there's traffic studies that are needed or something like that, that we, in doing one thing, we don't blow up something else. I think it looks fantastic, it's going to be nice and walkable. I am a little surprised that we were going a little further north than we thought on Beaumont Avenue. So if you scroll up that way, so we have this intersection at Eighth Street where you have the building there. And then things start just to get a little more sparse and a little less walkable. I'd like to see maybe a proposal of maybe ending at, I think it's Eighth Street. Is that where Beaumont Cafe is? If we take one block off of that? No, Tenth, sorry. Yeah, so Eight, Nine, Ten, yeah, so maybe ending there versus Eleventh. It's just a thought for now. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just a couple of comments quickly. So we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, infrastructure. We just talked about smart technology, improving our traffic flow, you know, cutting down on wait time and moving people around. And then I take a look at this, and I'm wondering, are we creating another Carmageddon with all of the way that it's set up? Now, don't get me wrong, I love it, I think we need something like this. But, you know, I was sitting in Dollar General the other day, or Family Dollar, looking at the amount of traffic moving through that Beaumont right in front of City Hall. And then, you know, we do have that ramp there at the end where the barn, Red Barn is down there, that's, you know, a major on-ramp. So what I'm concerned about is are we going to start creating more of a backup by doing this type of a design? So that's one concern. The other concern I have is going to, on Beaumont North, on a southbound, right there at Sixth Street, I didn't realize we were also condensing the road as well. So where that arch is, yeah, right there at the arch, right in there, we've got, again, major traffic flowing coming through here, and then we have this kind of a bottleneck. So I'm just, I'm concerned about creating, trying to create something nice, we're also creating another problem, kind of like what Councilmember Finn was mentioning. So I don't know, did we do a traffic study to see what this is going to do? To see what the flows are? And then, okay, now if I go down to one lane, what would be the prediction of the backup? Because I'm very concerned about that. Then, I'm just throwing out stuff. And then on the trees, are the trees in planters or are they in the ground?
I think that's to be determined.
Okay, because one of our major concerns we have is their liability with their trees and their sidewalks. And this has got a lot of them, and I love it, it looks great. But again, knowing what we're running into now from what they've done in the past, are we creating another future issue coming forward? So these are just things that I think now as we get closer, I love how you overlaid because I'm a visual person, so I can see it better now. But it also brings up these other questions because if we don't really look at the whole thing and try and address this, you know, we don't want to- you know, we don't want to invest and move forward and then find out that, wow, we created this issue and we really didn't look at that and we were all focused on doing this and we didn't understand what the repercussions were going to be. But my major comment would be, uh, about the traffic study. Because, um, you know, roundabouts one thing and, you know, whether they're going to work or whatever. But my concern is more of the deduction of lane. That, that's what I'm concerned about the most. And then we have such a, a magnitude of length that we're doing that for. So I just throw that out to my colleagues as well. Um, you know, I don't know if it's, I'm getting cold feet because it's getting closer to, to stamping the approval or not, I'm not sure. But I do know that traffic's one of our biggest issues and are they going to appreciate the beauty when they're stuck in traffic? You call it a calming effect, I call it a calling effect. Call your council member that. Because it just, to me, I envision this mess. And I just want to make sure that we're just kind of, you know, crossing all our teams. That's all. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Voight?
Yeah, I, I appreciate those comments, Councilmember Martinez. I think on the flip side though, that, um, uh, once you create this area and you get it going, that there's the potential that people avoid the area. They, they learn the patterns and, uh, to Councilmember Finn's kind of, uh, conversation as well. Um, you know, ideally they find, uh, alternative ways. And if we impact and make the arterials, uh, more effective on Highland Springs, uh, Oak Valley Parkway, things along those lines. Um, ideally we're mitigating some of those traffic issues upfront, um, by giving them the opportunity to go those other routes and hopefully get through the city. I, I think it is a, uh, an uncomfortable situation by all means. Um, but it is what I think the community is looking for, which is a walkable space, a more lively downtown area. Um, and variety. And I think that if we can't create the safe, walkable space, then we can't bring in what we're trying to attract. And so, um, I, sometimes I, it, it's kind of like, uh, triaging in my mind. Uh, and what's the greatest good, you know, with the minim-, the, trying to minimize the effects, um, but recognizing that there's going to be some sacrifices. So, but I, I'm hopeful um, that people learn different patterns and that it creates kind of, um, that walkable space that we're looking for.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Um, so the first phase, I think you said was streetscape, which will not, will that have a lot of, uh, hardscape changes or is it just basically the landscaping?
It'll be, uh, Sixth Street in its entirety, the street and the streetscape.
Okay. Um, I think, you know, we, we sort of struggled with the traffic patterns when we first started planning this. But we all realized at that point that in order to get, as, um, Mayor Protem mentioned, in order to get the, the effect we're looking for, you have to slow down traffic. That's the whole purpose of the design is to slow it down. And I think that the first stage was what, four, four years, five years? And how long is it going to take for the Pennsylvania to become a relevant, um, exit point?
The Pennsylvania interchange?
Yeah.
The Great Sep.
Great Sep and interchange.
Yeah, so the Great Sep, um, we're on a timetable of about two years.
Okay.
The interchange could be 10 years after that.
Okay. So I'm just, I, I, I think it's what we originally had asked to be designed. Um, and I think, um, I'm in favor of continuing to move forward with this. And I, and I agree, I personally, right now, I don't go down Sixth Street. I'll go up to, um, to Oak Valley if I want to get on the freeway. Um, you know, it depends on where I am on Sixth Street, but, uh, I don't see, I, I, again, I think as, I think it was, uh, Councilmember Martinez who said that it's sort of uncomfortable looking at the traffic patterns. But I think that's what we, what we wanted. So that, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Um, I, I have the same concerns in regards to traffic and I, and so I started looking at the alternative routes. You know, you, one of them, as Council, uh, Mayor Protem Voight mentioned, was B of Highland Springs. You could either go Highland Springs, Oak Valley, or Highland Springs to Brookside and, and cut over. But, but we don't have those improvements in it. And I'm wondering if those improvements are going to impact the, the data collection that we have to do, which is in the next phase. Um, you know, we're, we've got RCTC in, in the city of Beaumont and wants to invest millions of dollars to get a design done for Beaumont Avenue, the bridge, to increase capacity there. And then by looking at this plan, we're going to go ahead and choke it down to two lanes as soon as you cross the bridge coming into Beaumont. That blue square, um, looks like it's going to go one lane each way, which would be like right by McDonald's and the gas station there. So we increase capacity only to, to take it down when you come into Beaumont. I, I like the idea. I like the design. The thing that I, we don't have in places, kind of like Redlands, I, I picture Redlands and you've got that nice downtown walkable area, but you've got Redlands Boulevard, which is a clean bypass. We don't have any bypasses to get around. I know that we've talked, you know, people will learn what the bypass is, but, um, you know, one of the things I looked at as Councilmember Finn referenced was Fifth Street. But Fifth Street is in no condition to take a lot of heavy traffic when you, when you're coming. Because that would be the first thing that I would do is from San Jacinto, which is doing a lot of warehousing right now. You're coming over through 79, my thing would be to turn. I'd go, what, east on Fifth and then to Palm and then east on Sixth when you do that. So we don't have, at least at this point, we're doing the work, but we don't have the bypasses to get around this downtown area. Um, I don't solidify, I'll, I'll say, you know, we, we've worked, this council has worked really hard regarding the, the level of service D in, in different areas. And the concern that I have is we take an area that's struggling in, in downtown. We, we go from maybe a D to an F to get the walkable area. But then we, we impact the other alternate routes because we don't have the facilities in place yet to, to get around the downtown area. And I, I think really that's kind of the concern that I have is I'd like to start focusing more on getting the facilities to get around the downtown so that when we do the downtown, we don't, um, get the, the calling effect. We can avoid that. And obviously we're going to get some, but, so I agree with, with council saying is, yeah, people are going to learn the routes, but we don't have the routes in place yet. You know, we, we're, you know, AI is going to be a year out, which, which is good. I'm thinking maybe in, in two to three years, we'll have sufficient uh, alternate routes, but I, I'm just, I'm guessing. And then we have, Oak Valley is going to be one of the key components when you go up, say, Pennsylvania, which is a nightmare to Oak Valley. And I know that we'll be getting additional signal lights on Oak Valley, but then we're going to be getting a new retail commercial down off, near the freeway entrance. That's going to impact traffic. And so getting through Beaumont is just, we, we have very few op-, options, at least in my opinion, and the way that I, I'm, when I drive around and look at this, um, at least at this point in time. So I'm, I'm not really comfortable at this point, moving forward, until we can analyze what the other options are as far as getting around the downtown area so that we're not, um, so that there are options to get through that area or avoid that area altogether. I would be okay with dropping that, that north Beaumont Avenue back a block is, is fine. But I just, as we, we look at this, I just, this is the primary connect, connector. Um, unfortunately, anything that goes on on the 10, anytime there's an accident or a, a lane shutdown, is it, Sixth Street is the bypass. So, um, I guess that's all I have for right now. Councilmember White?
Um, when did we start planning this? When did we start our first RFP on, on doing this?
It was at least three and a half years ago.
Boy, I thought it was longer than that. And how many times has council seen this as direction to continue to move forward?
Multiple.
And now we're, now we're bringing up these traffic issues when we discussed these at the very beginning? How much have we spent on this?
I, I don't know how much we paid GHD, but it was about a two, two and a half year project. Can, I just want to reiterate, this plan was adopted. It was adopted a year ago. The, the purpose of tonight's discussion is we want to pull the trigger on the next step. And that was, um, part of what we talked about under the CIP public hearing, was to make sure that we programmed money to continue to pull that trigger. But this plan was adopted a year ago after multiple community surveys, multiple town hall meetings, multiple, um, engagements with the consultant, GHD. So I just wanted to remind council of that.
And one last comment. We did, the Beaumont Avenue interchange, yes, RCTC wants to work on that. That's at least a 15 to 20 year project. Uh, even if you get the two, right now it's one and a half billion, probably closer to $2 billion in funding. So do we put this all on hold until the Pennsylvania Great Sep and interchange is in place? And Beaumont Avenue interchange is in place? And we're 20 years down the line and we still haven't started the plan? That's my concern.
Uh, you know, and I appreciate your comments, but I, I wasn't saying to put it on hold. And all I'm saying is just to, at least until, I mean, I'm not saying to put it on hold until the Beaumont over, uh, passes down Beaumont Ave. What I'm saying is to, is to put it on hold until we can figure out or develop other bypasses to get around that.
When you say develop bypasses, are you talking about building roads and intersections and, and is that what you mean by building bypasses?
What I mean is looking at Fifth Street to see what improvements need to be done there. Looking at, I, I know that we've got First Street that's coming, right? We've got that. We've done that analysis.
But you, if, if you don't improve Fifth Street, I don't go down Fifth Street because it's a piece, I'm sorry, it's a really bad street to go down.
It is, and that's what I'm, that's my point, is that's going to be one of the ways to get around.
You're going to go down that street once and go, I'm never going down that street again. I'll go to Brookside or I'll get on the freeway. Again, I just don't understand why we go through three, four years of planning, projects, town halls. We've all been part of this. We've all reviewed it multiple times. And now we're bringing up the kinds of issues that'll put this on hold for a minimum of three to five years.
Well, unfortunately, my assumption was is that when they put this together, they did a traffic study and they didn't. Now that's the next phase, but my concern is.
Your assumption? You were here throughout the entire process.
They didn't do a traffic study.
And why didn't you raise that three and a half years ago? And why did you approve the plan a year ago?
Because looking at it like you did, I thought it was a good plan. And now as you, the more I deal with the traffic issues, the more concerns I have. You know, when, when, uh, prior administration restripped right in front of City Hall, I got phone calls all over and we changed it. Didn't work. That was my concern, right?
And we knew all of that before we started developing this plan.
I'm not saying that we're not going to go through with the plan. I just want to make sure that we figure out other ways around this downtown area and not just jump forward without any forethought.
I think we've had a lot of forethought and the plan was to dr-, to, to direct traffic away from this area to make it more of a residential walking point. You could not have Straight Street, State Street and Redlands become what it has become if you didn't go with a direction of building a walkable space.
Understand.
May I comment here?
Yeah, it's on Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, so, um, and I, and I agree to the extent that, you know, we talked about having alternative routes and stuff, but, you know, where? You know, we don't have a lot of choices. But my question to staff is this, so let's talk about the action that you're asking about. Because I need more clarification of what we're doing at this point. So if we were to accrue versus direct staff to move forward with the engineering plans, what you're asking us now is now that we have a conceptual, we're going to go and have, go out to get it engineered so that we know what the costs are going to be, you know, put in the scapes and everything and get a number from the plan. And then what studies it says associated with that are you talking about?
So let me, the, the next step, um, that we are preparing for includes a contract award that's actually ready to go. It's gone out to bid. I'm going to read you the scope so that you understand what, what we're talking about as far as the next step. So there are, um, six tasks in the scope. One of them is project management, data gathering and analysis. And then task three is investigations. And within those investigations, it includes survey and centerline control, right of way analysis, utility research and potholing, geotechnical, hydrological and drainage, traffic studies and assessments, street and pedestrian lighting, tree impact analysis. And then we get into design and that would be renderings, exhibits for public presentation. And then, uh, one of the final tasks would be a PDR, which is a preliminary design report. And that would take us to 30% of preliminary design. That's your street improvement plans, your sidewalk, um, pedestrian ADAs, uh, lighting, bike lanes, all of that. And so what, what I would recommend is that we're ready to award a contract to, we've already gone out to bid with this scope. What I would recommend is that council at least allow us to do up to task four, which is all of the investigations, geotechnical, hydrological, and get to a point where we're ready for design and then bring all of that back to council so that we can at least then talk about, um, all of the investigations that the consultant has collected and have that conversation, um, before we continue with the rest, the other three tasks. The final task, um, would be any environmental services, which we won't know until we get farther down the project.
And even at that point, if we were to go through all of that and get our designs and get numbers and hard numbers and so forth, at that point, then we can come back and even say, okay, you know, this number is totally out of line for what we've got now, but we can talk about a phase or we can talk about, let's do this section of town as maybe a, um, uh, trial to see how the traffic's flowing with this. Is, is that possible in the future or are we, are we looking at all or nothing?
Unfortunately, the, the changes are so drastic that you can't implement like Sixth Street in, in parts. It has to be from roundabout to roundabout. And then Beaumont Avenue could be a separate phase, but it'll have to be from the I-10 freeway to, uh, that one's a little bit different. It, it can go anywhere you want.
I'm thinking more of California to the I-10, right in front of the Red Barn and stuff. That's what I'm thinking. Because originally that was the idea of the walkable area. And then we morphed into going to north and then we morphed into going this way and now we got half the city. But anyways, um, so that's what I was looking at eventually. Because we all know that we're not going to have the numbers to do it all. And I had talked to Matt Musgibes about this. It's like, we've got so many pressing things that are right now happening, Petrero, Stewart Park, et cetera, that we know that we're not going to be able to pull a trigger on a big old project right now, this big. You know, I mean, we're, we're there again, trying to do too many things too fast with what limited resources we have. But I do like the idea of going in and get more studies done because some of my questions might be answered. And some of the data coming back might show us what might work and what may not work. But I do agree, we've gone this far. We're not asking them to go out to bid on constructions. We don't have any numbers yet. Because myself, I would like to know how much this project is going to be. And we, and we have no clue yet because we haven't got to that, that area. So right now I think maybe debating stuff is probably premature because we don't know what we're looking for. So I do like your idea. If, if council likes that, I would, I would entertain doing at least the one through four that you asked and then have a, a stop point to where we can discuss and we can move forward.
To, is that something that we can negotiate with the consultant?
It'll be subject to them approving it, but we certainly can reach out to them and, and try to negotiate it.
It's a compromise, I think, in order so we don't definitely stall it like Mr. White mentioned. But, you know, get more answers maybe down as we go.
No, I, I understand. And I think we all realized at the start of this whole discussion several years ago, this was in, Robert, um, reinforced this, it's a 15, 20 year project. And it's, it's, it's the project that 10 years from now, someone's going to say, well, I'm glad you guys did the first 10 years of the work. Um, but your recommended action here almost is exactly what you said. I mean, it just basically says, direct staff to move forward preliminary engineering plans and studies associated with implementing the adopted revitalization plan. It doesn't go in any further than that. Right, but she suggested that we only do the first four stages. And what I'm, what I'm, what I'm implying is that what Elizabeth suggested is really the direct, what the staff, what they're asking us to do. Which is to for, move forward with preliminary. with preliminary engineering plans and studies.
Correct. That would be all six tasks. We, we have a staff report teed up for September 2nd to award the contract with all six tasks. Because we've already gone through the RFP process.
What were the two then that weren't on there that you said the first four?
The design and the preliminary design report. Those are the two that I'm saying. Let us come back and at least present to council the first three tasks to show, it may answer some of the questions that you have before we start actually going into design. But I do think that if we allow the consultant to do all of the data gathering and analysis and the investigative aspect of the, the scope, I think a lot of these questions that we have will be answered.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move, that we direct staff to move forward with what they originally brought to us, which is all six tasks. And we can wait after the fourth task and, and move forward, but I'd like to give them approval to do all six tasks and move forward as they were requesting to begin.
Before a roll call, Councilmember Finn had some comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I brought up the whole thing with, with the traffic because in my job, I'm all over town and I come, I drive from many different directions at different times of the day and so forth and see the problems that we, that we're facing. When I ran for office in 2020, nobody talked about traffic. It was COVID. Nothing was going on. And ever since then, it's just the traffic has just continually gotten worse. And that is not just due to Beaumont. That is due to our neighbors growing and we are a pass-through town. And so I just wanted to make sure, and I appreciate Elizabeth explaining the detail of what work's going to be done, but I see that if we, for lack of a better word, choke down Sixth Street, something else is going to increase. And I want to make sure that's accounted for as well. And so if they can increase the scope a little bit to see what those peripheral streets are going to impact that they are going to have along with those truck routes in that traffic study, I think it would be very helpful for all of us. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Clarification to staff. So Councilmember White had mentioned that if we pass, we go through all six, but there's a stopping point. How does that work in the bid? Would you, would that be verbal between you and the consultant that, hey, stop at this point, discuss it and then go forward or?
If, if we stop it after, as I recommended, after task three, we would have to negotiate. They, obviously, if they come and present, there's going to be a charge. And so that's what I'm, we would have to go back and renegotiate, but we're ready to award the contract for all six tasks.
So how do we incorporate the data that comes out of those studies into the design? Because they're going to come back with data and if some of the stuff pops up, something we didn't foresee, do they take that into account into design or does it just keep going forward and say, oh, we have the data?
No, I think Robert can speak to that.
Yeah, I, I think the appropriate thing would be to perform the studies and bring the studies back to, to council to just discuss the findings. I also just want to be clear, we're not, we're not asking them to state that the roundabouts in this case or traffic calming measures is a yes or no, pass or fail. The studies will support it. And that the, the traffic, like the traffic studies will just quantify the existing traffic and future traffic. And then the engineer will implement that into the design on how to appropriately size the roundabout. And the other studies are very similar.
So that's what I'm asking. The data that comes from that will be incorporated into the design in some way.
It will.
Mayor, may I clarify my motion?
Sure.
Okay, I had mentioned that you could stop. That was not my motion. My motion was all six tasks. Okay? I just want to make sure you didn't think my motion was to stop after four. My motion was to give the recommended action that staff was requesting.
And I'll vote no, because that was what I.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
No.
No. Okay. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
No.
Just for clarification, that was 3-2, is that correct? Okay. So you will have an opportunity to talk about the contract on September 2nd. I just want to make that clear.
Item nine, J9, discussion regarding wrapping utility vaults along Palm Avenue with historic images.
Mr. Darren.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's discussion item focuses on a proposed beautification project along Palm Avenue. Staff has developed a project for the installation of vinyl wraps along the utility meter vaults located on the median within Palm Avenue. These wraps will feature historic photographs of Beaumont, highlighting the city's heritage and enhancing visual appeal along this key corridor. The goal of this project is to promote civic pride, creating a more engaging pedestrian experience and supporting the broader effect to revitalize this downtown area as a vibrant and welcoming designation. The wrapped vault will tell a story of Beaumont's history, allowing residents and visitors to connect with the community's past as they walk along Palm Avenue. The communications team has prepared beautifully themed mockups located within the staff report as exhibits A3, incorporating historic images of Beaumont. These designs are intended to reflect the city's unique history and provide a cohesive, meaningful display. We welcome any comments or feedback to council as they may wish to provide we move forward with this positive enhancement through Palm Avenue. That concludes my presentation and I'll move on to any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line? No callers.
Okay, I'll open up for council discussion or a motion.
Do you have a question, how big?
I'm sorry?
There's a question too.
Yeah, I will move over that one. Go ahead.
I just want to know how big a vault is.
Okay, my question's going to go along with that if I could. Is it those silver boxes down Palm?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then the way that it would go is the Beaumont logo would be on the angled part facing up, right? Okay.
And then just to clarify then, it's the metal ones, it's not the grated green ones that we have there currently as I was driving down. Okay, very good.
The metallic silver ones.
There's seven of them.
Sorry. I was just, I think of the tiles, you know.
No, no. No, this is not the tiles.
We could add some tiles to it. Councilmember White?
The recommended action of this was receive and file, but it looked like you were asking for direction. Is that correct?
So it was just feedback. So if you guys had any opinions or actions that you want in regards to the designs, if you wanted to see something else, otherwise it was just receive and file and then staff would move forward with the proposed project.
Got it. I like what you're proposing here, so I'm in favor of it.
The, the intent of this is to just add a little bit more to downtown to attract more people. We, at some point, intend to fully roll this out. Palm Avenue has the most vaults, at least that I know. It's part of downtown revitalization, foot traffic, lot of walkers. We're trying to get people to start talking about it and, you know, hey, let's go check those out. But eventually I'd like to see this, you know, in other areas. Beaumont Avenue, we don't have any vaults because we don't have irrigation there, so.
Yeah, I think you guys have done a great job here. I love seeing all the old pictures and I think it really brings back, and adds some culture.
I'd like to give a shout out to Julie and Princess. They really worked with Darren to design something. We started out with the historical photos, wrapping one around each and they got really, no, Princess is very talented. She came up with this.
Oh, good. So just to receive and file, you've got good direction and we're good to go? Okay. J10, Cherry Festival recapitulation and Analysis.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. So this is the Cherry Festival recap that we had been talking about. The report's going to provide or does provide a summary and visitor analysis of the 2025 Cherry Festival, which was held from May 30th to June 2nd at the Noble Creek Regional Park. So I won't get too much into the details. Your report identifies it for the public, but if there's anything you want me to read into the record, let me know. So as we know, the 2025 Cherry Festival was over four days. It attracted over 44,000 visitors. This report will provide the important elements of the event, including public safety measures, traffic and parking operations, and the fiscal impacts so that we can support future event planning. I learned a lot of history while I was putting this together with Joseph, so it was very, very interesting. And it was nice to know that this came about in 1930. Boy, and not too long after the city was incorporated in 1912. By then, Mayor Beaumont, Dr. Guy Bogart, and this was in collaboration with the Rotary Club, who again, has been around for a very long time. So initially it was held at Bogart Park. Later on, it was moved to Stewart Park. And in 2024, it was moved to the Noble Creek Regional Park. So this has been its second year at the park. So over the decades, this festival has evolved into a major community tradition organized by the Cherry Festival Association, which is a nonprofit organization in partnership with the city of Beaumont. And in 2024, the Parks District, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Parks District, joined the partnership by entering into a three-way, or actually into an agreement with the Cherry Festival in 2024. And then in 2025, we did the three-way MOU. So this is a second consecutive year at the Noble Creek Regional Park. So and to, to ensure the event's success, you know, the city was asked to become a partner in the event. So all three entities again entered into this to provide financial, staffing and insurance support. So we have a software known as Placer AI that identifies the amount of visitors every year. And we've had this data since 2019, so we put that into the report. So from 2019 to 2025, we've had visitors range from 43,500 to the peak at 54,000 back in 2023, and this year, 44,000. Of course, there was a couple of years there when we had the COVID pandemic where the event didn't occur. The city is keeping track of this data and sharing it with the Cherry Festival Association as well as the Parks District. And again, this evaluation and this data is supposed to serve as a, as a benchmark so that we can evaluate the long-term event performance and guide us to be able to improve the event in future years. So let's start off with public safety. Police department supported by Star Pro Security, they maintained onsite presence throughout the four-day festival. They provided crowd control and responded to incidents. There were eight total incidents, juvenile altercations, I should say fights, and one adult-related. Parties involved were escorted from the event. No one was arrested and no other criminal activity was reported. For fire prevention, there were no incidents. The fire marshal conducted regular inspections and we had two staff present at the event all four days. So the event went without incident. However, there were some safety measures that the fire department has identified just to improve future events, and those are listed there in the report. Anyone that'd like to go through them? For traffic and parking management, the city hired a consultant known as AWP Safety. They performed traffic and parking control for the event. However, Public Works and police in the city developed the traffic control concept, which AWP implemented. So although the overall traffic control and parking management was definitely an improvement from what I was told over the prior year, there were some site constraints that affected the parking layout ingress and egress. There were also some misaligned vehicles, limited lighting, limited staffing also created some inefficiencies from what we were told. Therefore, there's some recommendations that were identified for future events. We'd like to use, reuse the traffic control configuration from this year's event. We thought that went very well, especially on Oak Valley Parkway. We'd like to hire a traffic control contractor earlier so that we can get competitive bids as opposed to just going with one, although our Public Works Director did save us quite a bit of money on that by renegotiating. So thank you for that, sir. Or should I say city planner vestal? Transit, city transit transported over 2,683 passengers across three pickup locations. We had Walmart, Fellowship in the Past Church and the sports park. Highest demand occurred on Friday, May 30th with 1,168 passengers. And the sports park was the most utilized site, recording 1,422 passengers over those four days. So we can definitely say that transit did an amazing job and was very well-used. So there's strong operational coverage and access for festival attendees. Gate sales. So in 2025, we saw net gate sales totaling $150,646. That was a little lower compared to 2024, which is $215,606. So I think we need to work a little bit on that. Carnival sales, slightly down also compared to 2024. Gross revenue in 2025 was 206,000 with a net profit of 52,000. In comparison, 2024 had 209,000 with a net profit of about 53,000. Now the beer garden. So unlike 2024, this year's beer profits were shared between the Parks District and the Cherry Festival Association. And that was something that they both agreed on because the Parks District could supply the staffing for that event. So when you look at the overall, the Cherry Festival Association received 30% of the profits. And the other two, which is the Parks District and Craft Lounge, received 35%. So I believe from what I understand, they all felt that that was equal and they were happy with the outcome. However, when you look at the total from the association, they received 12,879. That was a little bit of a drop compared to the prior year, but again, they had the assistance of the staff. Public outreach, I think our staff did a great job promoting this. We got into it a little bit late in the game, so I think next year it's going to be quite of an improvement. And Julie Van Hook, our PIO, led the effort on this with Ari from the association. So we partnered with NBC Palm Springs, only in the IE and the Record Gazette. NBC Palm Springs delivered almost 280,000 impressions via TikTok and digital audio with a 92 or 98.7% listen-through rate. The general, or the Cherry Festival generic video alone earned 176,000 impressions. And then only in the IE's campaign reached 141,000 accounts with over 13,000 interactions. So that's pretty impressive, especially when we started a little bit late. Email blast through the Record Gazette reached 50,000 recipients with 10,500 opens and 1,500 clicks. And additional outreach included 3,900 accounts reached on social media, 38,000 interactions and 2,331 new followers. RIVCO TV produced four six-eight-minute videos and an open letter to the community was published in collaboration with the Record Gazette. And I will say that this next year, we will definitely improve on making sure that the city is advertised. And I know that concern came up a little bit later. And again, because we started this a little late, by the time the CF Association figured that out with the city, it was a little too late. So next year, we're looking to promote the city as a city event. The overall fiscal impact, the city spent total of $259,884. And that includes the $1,400 we spent on the Overstreet banner in front of City Hall, 60,000 on traffic control, 53,000 on police services, 26,000 on fire services, 13,000 on insurance, which is again, is something that we're going to look at reducing, which we've already talked to insurance about. Another 6,000 on transit shuttle services and then $100,000 donation from the city to the Association for the Entertainment Venues. So again, this is a receive and file report. Mayor and council, I do want to let you know that staff is creating a committee consisting of department reps, the Parks District reps, and also our two council reps, which is Mayor Protam Voight and Councilmember White, unless there's any other direction on that. But we're looking at initially meeting two times a month, starting in September, and then ramping up towards next year. The goal is to be ready by the middle of February to be able to execute a new MOU if you so desire. But we want to be ready for this year so that we're not waiting to the last minute. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, we'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Could I pop in just to kind of give a quick account real quick?
Sure, sure.
And then maybe I can help answer some of the questions ahead of time, if possible. We did meet, we did the recap. Thank you for the work that you did on this. I think you guys captured a lot of what we were looking for when we looked for the recap. And that was something that was really important to us when we all sat up here as a council. We had a lot of discussions on this. It started back in March, and as you guys know, we all felt very, very pressed for time. That is something that's in the forefront as we continue to move forward. I know Deputy City Manager Romo just talked about kind of the next steps and moving forward. From my perspective, you know, continuing as the Parks Liaison with the Cherry Festival Liaison, working in cohort with the staff and moving towards something I would like to see an MOU come way sooner than February, or some type of agreement that really looked at how we move this event to its sustainability. So I think that we can all notice that we had to come in at the last minute as a rescue effort, and that's evidenced by the amount, the dollars that we see in front of us. And more than anything, that's been at the forefront of this, this group that we're working forward with. And part of that is ensuring and working towards getting the Cherry Festival sustainable and looking at a three-to-five-year timeframe. If you go back and look at the meetings where we discussed a lot of this, we talk about working towards a three-to-five-year plan, towards sustainability. And that's really the goal of this committee, is to move them towards complete independence, where essentially we are backing out and then looking at what we have to budget moving forward so that we aren't hit with surprises like we were this last year. Because that was really one of the most uncomfortable points, I think, for all of us, but also not wanting this event to stop, as we heard the longstanding history with it, and continuing to move that forward. So I just kind of wanted to give that context. We haven't solidified, at least in my mind, the cadence in which the meetings would continue. There was some discussion around that, but we haven't established that. But I know that we are working towards a much sooner MOU or agreement that I think that we can get to between all three entities. And really, the goals in my mind, and I'll let Councilmember White, you know, touch in if he would like to or add anything, are really to limit the amount of liability that the city takes on and slowly but surely cut back on either the fiscal donations that are going in towards that or looking at what we're willing to continue to contribute, as well as, is this even sustainable for the city and what we gave, you know, gave this year from a staff time perspective? And really getting all of that information upfront. There's a lot of information that we don't have yet, that once we got this recap, we can now start to ask those further questions. What kind of staff time do we have? Do we need to look at scaling back other events? Those are just kind of some of the discussion that would need to move forward, and none of that has occurred at this point. We've had the recap meetings, and then we are now bringing it back here so that we can have that further discussion essentially of moving forward, which, you know, when I went back and looked at the meetings, you could see that there was definite direction as the liaisons to continue working towards a three-to-five-year plan to get the Cherry Festival to sustainability. Just a little added context.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I just want to add the fact that we put this all together in three or four weeks. And I think the information that you provided in here regarding the number of hits on websites and how often people are looking at the videos, that was just over a few weeks. So, you know, my hope is that we get from staff, we take these numbers, and we take the input from PIO and other departments, and we put together a three-to-five-year plan on how we're going to get back to where we were before, which is we were supporting it with police services, and we were also adding money to improve the talent. And that's my goal, and if we crunch all these numbers and then we ask staff to put together a projected four- or five-year timeframe and what the returns will be, if we determine that after three to five years, we can't accomplish that, then we have to take a serious look at whether or not we continue. But I think that my goal is a little bit more aggressive. I think we should have an MOU in place before the end of the year. I think from the discussions we've had past and the discussions that we've had recently, I think it's going to be two MOUs. I think there's going to be an agreement between the city and the Parks District, and then an agreement between the city and the Cherry Festival. And because, again, I think we need to isolate and separate those two pieces of the puzzle. But like I said, we haven't, Jessica and I have not made any promises. We've just said, we have made one promise, we're not going to wait until two weeks before the next Cherry Festival. So I think we should shoot for a big discussion on this by the end of the year, so that in January, February, putting together the MOUs, we're hiring the traffic, we're doing all of that. And that's what I think our goal is, is to get something. Number one, can we get out of this in five years? If not, then we have to look at it, does it become just a city event, or does it become Cherry Festival event, you're on your own type thing? So I don't know. Until we actually look at the numbers, I don't know. But I believe, and the discussion that kept coming up at our debrief around the room was we needed to get a regional outreach. We need to stop focusing on just bringing Beaumont and Danny. We need to use the billboards we have, to use the advertising that we've started working on, and increase those numbers from 150,000 back to, I'm sorry, from 44,000 back to 55,000. And then I think we can make it sustainable. You know, you charge for parking, you charge for, I think there's a lot of ways to make this sustainable, but as Jessica pointed out, we'd like to, the two of us would like to continue to bring something back sooner rather than later.
Thank you both very much for that update. That helps a lot. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. Did we spend about the same amount of money this year as we did last? What was the figure last year? Does anybody know?
Last year, we budgeted 100,000. Last fiscal year, we budgeted 100,000, and that was directly paid to the entertainment. But the Cherry Festival was invoiced for police services and all the other things. So I don't, I don't think we spent more than 100,000.
Okay, so then if I understand it correctly, so the 259 that's mentioned, 25984, some of those costs were reimbursed for police services and those other things? Am I correct?
Yes, I would have to go back and look at the invoices. I don't know off the top of my head what the invoice was for the police services.
Okay, all right. But this year, the police was about 60,000.
So it was roughly this.
Yeah, and the parking was about the same.
Okay.
But we didn't monetize the parking at all.
And what seemed to be a greater effort in social media and online advertising and so forth, but seeing the drop in the attendance, do we think that could be related to the entertainment that came? Are they very, are the attendees, are they very specific as to who comes and who the entertainers are for the event?
Yeah, I mean, during the debrief, that was discussed a little bit. I think, my opinion, Jessica's opinion on this, is that being late to the game probably caused a drop, honestly. And also, I believe that this was graduation weekend? Was this?
I think it was before.
Was it right before? I thought there was something we couldn't. But I, you know, being late.
It was between Memorial Day and graduation.
But I would argue that it was the talent.
Okay.
Because if you look at Friday night, when they had a band out that was very popular, the place.
That was the busiest night, right?
Yeah, the place was packed, and there was no room to move. I also think there's an opportunity to take advantage of Sunday, because Sunday, they just pretty much have written it off, and they have, you know, they have usually a concert at one, and it's not a big name, and I think they're missing the boat there. But again, these are all ideas that I think could play into what we need to forecast in the future. But I, yeah, I definitely think with the regional outreach and getting more, bigger sponsors, we can get back to where we were, where I think originally, I think we were all comfortable over the years with the 100,000-plus. We have, haven't we waived police a number of years?
It was many, many years ago. I think it stopped under, after the 2015, 16, and under the new old Jeep.
But whether we like it or not, people think this is a city event.
Yeah.
And it really has, it really is. It can't be done without the city at some level, I don't think.
All right, thank you, and I appreciate your choose, your work on it. Thank you very much.
Let's just receive and file.
It's a receive and file, it's just informational.
Oh, shall I, Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just want, Councilmember Finn got my first question answered, but I just, it obviously looks like we had a very cooperative communication to get numbers and stuff this early. That was actually a plus that way I haven't seen in the past. So thank you for all of that work and however you got that. I'm assuming, of course, though, having that formal accounting is still going to be a part of the equation going forward. Okay, great. And I appreciate the report. I really appreciate a lot of this info and data that came. I think it's going to be useful, especially when you do more discussions. I think we can monopolize more on the transit. It was difficult to understand where to pick up. Some people were having issues with the church because they didn't know where it was. They got there, and there was nobody there, and there's no signage and all that kind of stuff. So I think once people see the congestion and stuff, they might want to go back and turn around and take a shuttle if they had a better, you know, advertisers. But that's stuff you can work on. So I just wanted to throw my appreciation out there because even coming in late in the game, this recap and your discussion and stuff has been a lot more than we've had in the past. So I feel confident going forward. So thank you, and thank you, Committee, for that.
There we go. Thanks, both of you, for your efforts on that. J11, and discussion and direction regarding elected official attendance at 2026 ICSC, the Innovating Conference Service Communities Conference.
Thank you, Mayor. This is coming before you because there was a request at the June 17th meeting to, in which we gave a recap of the conference, and at that time, Councilmember White had expressed interest in bringing back a discussion about the number of council members that attend ICSC, and so this item is before you for discussion and direction to staff.
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Thank you. I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just to kind of chime in first. So, you know, we had discussed in the past about, you know, what's the right number for us, you know, two, three, all? And then we compared it to different cities that have taken all and then have taken just under the, you know, majority. And I know Mr. Pinkney had chimed in about concerns with the Brown Act and so forth. So I just wanted to chime in real quickly. I don't have an issue having as many that want to go-go. I would just like to see if we take that route to encourage a policy we created to outline what the conduct is going to be at these conferences. And that conduct as far as attending, you know, gatherings, meetings, dinners, that kind of stuff, you know, just outlining so that the public can be aware that, yeah, we have a majority, but we have a clear defined as of what we're doing and what we're not doing. I don't know if that's enough to make you comfortable, Mr. Pinkney, but if we decide to go to that route, I think I would be comfortable with that, knowing that, you know, there's something written and we're following it, and it's been, you know, chimed in by the city attorney and, you know, I guess it's ultimately our decision what we're going to do, but at least we have that guidance and input there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my comments before, the concern is that if you have a majority of the council that's meeting with a developer about a project in your city or bringing a business to your city, there's no exception under the Brown Act for that. But if you manage it, if you can manage it in a way where you don't have, if, let's say you have four council members, there are five council members, you just have to be very careful about how you manage it so that you don't have that inadvertent, you know, violation of the Brown Act.
That's why I think a policy would be great to, you know, outline that, you know, only so many meet with the same one, it's consistent throughout the week, no discussion here, blah, blah, blah. Just as a way of me, if we are going to go in that direction, to be comfortable having that many people attend. I have no problem, though, with the numbers.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, so my thought is that we could easily do that, and the idea would be you have a couple, you know, depending on how many are there, a couple council members hanging out at the booth and others going out roaming, and we can do that and rotate, take turns, and I think we can manage that. But shouldn't we be managing Cal Cities, too? I mean, why is Cal Cities different from, because there's developers and consultants?
There's an exception under the Brown Act for those type of events. For, not by name, but those type of events where you're going, there's educational programs as part of it. But what you can't do at Cal Cities is have a majority of the council get together and talk about a project in the city.
Right, which we don't.
So you're allowed to go to it, there's an express exception that allows you to do it, but you just can't talk about things within your jurisdiction, within your subject matter jurisdiction as a council while you're at those events.
Okay. But we could do, we could manage that, as you pointed out.
It's a little bit, it's different than going to the League of California, the California League of Cities, in that the whole purpose of going is to entice projects, developers, et cetera, to come do something in your city. You can do it, you just can't have four or five, you know, three to five council members standing around talking to a developer or having a series of communications where two of you meet with the developer and pitch them on coming and opening a store or a business. And then the developer meets with the other two, and you've got a potential Brown Act violation. So you just have to be really careful. I think there's a risk that if you're not careful, that you could inadvertently, you know, have a Brown Act violation, and that's what, you know, I'm cautioning against. It just has to be very carefully managed, that's all. And just out of curiosity, I've never been to ICSC, are there a number of other cities that have all their council members there? Hopefully, they're not all sitting and talking to developers about projects in their city.
No, if I remember correctly.
They sent us into, would have a couple, two pairs of council members at the booth because they had two lobbies set up, two little meeting areas set up. But they also sent a couple around, I don't know, ICSC is one of the biggest conventions I've ever been to. I mean, it's multiple floors, multiple buildings. Yeah.
Mayor Pertim Voight?
Yeah, I think if we can divide it out into shifts or into two-by-twos, essentially keep us in pairs, and I don't know, the mayor by themselves or something along those lines, you could look at it that way and then divide it out. But it is going to take some staff organization and follow-through.
It's going to take some juggling on staff's part because some of the meetings actually are scheduled while we're there. And so I would propose a policy that's adopted by council just so that we send the message to the public that we're going to follow these rules. And because things happen on the fly, and meetings are scheduled on the fly, and then there's a lot of shuffling.
So, and I'll maybe alone on this one, but we typically, from the diocese, if there's a conflict out of an abundance of caution, we recuse ourselves. And I just think that as we go to these different events, whether it's the Washington DC, whether it's Sacramento, or whether it's the ICSC in Las Vegas, that we, out of abundance of caution, we send two. We've been to DC twice, we've set up pairs and groups and teams, and a meeting gets canceled, and it just, it ends up being a logistic nightmare when you have a bunch of council members that attend a working, what I'll call working event or working travel. So I would be concerned sending more than two and would not support that, so.
Councilmember Finn?
Well, I'm going to just weigh in on this because it's a legal concern that we have, right? And I would feel much more comfortable if the council picked two people to go because then you don't have the risk of a Brown Act violation. And we're human beings, and inadvertently- And we're human beings, and inadvertently conversations pop up, and, you know, it's just going to take a lot of diligent management. And you mentioned that there were some other cities that do it. I'm just curious, what, do you have any sense of the percentage of cities that send more than, that send a majority of the council?
I can tell you that, yeah, there are some cities that send the whole council. It's not looked favorable. However, when that does happen, there are three teams of staff members that do that. So we have one staff member that's taking care of two council members, and they're going to specific meetings with developers that the other council members are not going with. So you've got, in a sense, let's say if the whole five council go, that means we have three liaisons that are taking care of three groups.
In addition to manning the booth and doing everything else.
Councilmember Finn?
Well, in an effort to make it a little bit easier, May is the busiest month for my career, so I will not be attending. Every year, 26 years, been the same. But I do think the prior, I do think it should only be two, and I think the two that go are the two that serve on the Economic Development Committee. I mentioned that before, and I still feel the same. But if more go, then you're dealing with potentially four, not five.
And then as far as, just so I can ask legal, as far as the dinners that we go to, would we have to divide those as well? Developers?
I don't recommend it. I recommend against it. I mean, it just inadvertently, there's a very real risk that, you know, I mean, why are you meeting with the developer? Why are you having dinner with the developer? Because you're trying to entice them to do business in your city. I think it's risky to have a majority of the council in that scenario.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, so I just want to chime in because, you know, I was concerned when we first went, and I could see the potential there, but I think if we have a policy written to where we know, you know, we don't, just take a developer dinner, period. Then we have city, we all get per diem, and, you know, we can all sit together and just, you know, enjoy each other's company and have that policy written, we don't discuss business. But the reason I kind of switched my original thought on this is because once I attended there, they've cut down the event. It used to be longer, and now it's shorter, and it's so big, and there's so much to do that there was no way that Mayor and I could get half of it done. And if you have two floating member that can do, okay, this popped up, you're the floating member, you can go, or there are seminars there to go to that I would like to go to and listen to the education, I couldn't because I was, you know, somewhere else. So there's definitely a way it can be done. I think it's worth a trial, as long as, again, I'm still behind my policy idea, that it can be done, and now that we're looking at four, at least, you know, for a bit, you know, I think it's something that we can look at. But that was the reason, I just want to mention, that I had changed my direction, because there was so much to do that I just couldn't do it. So like, if I get to go next year, I'd be fine just listening to the seminars and stuff, you know, or staying at the booth and just manning tables and giving out merch. You know, there's a lot of things that we can do that, if it's well organized, I think. And I know, and I apologize for staff, it's one more headache you have to think about, but I think it can be done. And we have such a great staff, as mentioned earlier, I'm fully confident.
Four is more manageable than five, that's for sure.
Is there, since we're on the subject of ICSC, is there any interesting council going to the Palm Springs or San Diego events?
I believe staff attends the Palm Springs event. I personally do feel like there is value in at least one, or maybe the Economic Development Committee going on those smaller ones versus the large one. I think there is value there, in my opinion.
It wouldn't be as organized as Las Vegas, it would be more on-the-spot meetings.
Yeah, I think there's value in that.
I know there's some Riverside County cities that don't go to Vegas, and they go to San Diego.
Oh, and I was going to say, Mayor, I would turn the attention to staff and, you know, your opinions, because you've gone to those in the past, so if you see a potential that, yeah, we could, then, yeah, maybe one person or the two on the committee could go, you know, if it was going to be worth, use the setup and everything that goes around it. I don't know.
This would not be a city booth at either of those because all of our efforts would go towards Las Vegas. This would be more of just going for the day and walking around and introducing and getting business cards.
Yeah, that has value in itself, so. I mean, if, again, if the staff thought that it was going to be worthwhile to where we could get something out of it, you know, worth sending, then I think it'd be worth talking about.
It's a good thing in between, since it happens in September, and our economic development director is sending our economic development manager and our economic development analyst, so they're both going. If a council member wanted to accompany them, yeah, there definitely is time, and that would be valuable. However, as our city manager was saying, we really don't schedule meetings, per se. We go just to determine who's out there, and maybe we bump into somebody that will be valuable to bring in.
Well, if we're going anyway, it's worth offering to the council, I think.
So depending on the day, I would like to go to the San Diego event, but I'm not on the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, I am, by the way. For committee, I'm.
Yeah, but if there's not enough for two people, you know, I'm fine letting them go.
I think it's only Palm Springs.
Okay, it's only Palm Springs. They apparently did away with San Diego, and now they only do Palm Springs.
Same thing, depending on the day, yeah.
So Palm Springs, is that?
Yeah, do you know what the date is?
Kirk's looking at.
It's at the end of September, last week of September.
Okay, yeah, I would, I'd be interested in attending.
Would we need to bring back an item on that? Or just offer it up?
I think the issues, I think you can address that. I think it's within the, it's germane to the issue in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm okay.
Do you have direction?
No, I'm going to clarify direction. So I have Councilmember White attending the Palm Springs. I did not get clear direction on whether or not we're going to draft a policy to bring back.
I would like to, I agree that I think we could do it with more than two, but I would like to have a policy in place.
What I would propose is that the policy cover not just ICSC, but any group travel, and we can address the Cal Cities in there as well, Washington DC, Sacramento.
Yeah, I mean, the ones that concern me are Sacramento, Washington DC, ICSC, because you're there for a purpose. You're there to get money, you're there to get development. You go to the League of California Cities, you're not, it's for edification, education, you know.
I don't think we need to include Cal Cities.
I don't either.
That's just to, just to do the, I would like to see the three.
Well, and she might want to, because it depends on dinners and stuff, maybe.
Well, I'd like to at least include it in the draft policy so that we can differentiate between why it's okay for Cal Cities, you know. Okay, policy will be brought back, and we'll register, Councilmember White.
I can attend that one as well.
Okay.
So are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to J-12, set a time and date, a place for a special workshop, and mayoral appointment of two council members to a working subcommittee.
So Mayor, I put this item on, we are extremely close to presenting a conceptual design of a police station at the new, at the new site of the 30 acres at Beaumont and Cougar Avenue. We will, in the workshop, if council approves, we will bring our financing team. Not only do we want to show council a conceptual, we want approval of that conceptual or any modifications, we want to talk about how we're going to pay for the building, and all of the things so that we can take the next step and, at council's direction, either do a P-3 or go to design. We're at a point now where we can't move the project forward without council direction. I am asking for two council members to be appointed to a working subcommittee. I know we have a lot of subcommittees, but this is a multimillion-dollar project, and things are going to come up in between council meetings where I will need to go to the subcommittee to bounce ideas off and just make sure that we're moving in the same direction. That's not to say that we won't be bringing updates back to the full body, but there are some decision-making things. There are some tours of current police stations that I would like to take two council members to, just to start that visual of this is what we envision as staff for the future of our police station. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to council.
Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
So open it up for council discussion. For the working subcommittee, I'd like it to be the mayor and Mayor Protem, unless council has another proposal, or?
I'm good with that.
All right. So then all we need to do is work on a date for the workshop, special workshop?
Correct. And there are two dates in your package that I'm proposing, they're next week.
Tuesdays are always good.
Mayor, may I chime in?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
So I've got two conflicts, so I can, I have to leave at 6:15 on the 26th and 6 o'clock on the 27th, because I've got two other engagements I already have on there. So I'm willing to jump in and leave when I can, and you guys can continue the conversation, if that's okay?
Yeah.
But that's the best I can do.
Either work for me, I'm available.
Now, did I see?
Would council entertain a 4 o'clock workshop?
What's the date?
The 26th or the 27th?
Tuesdays the 26th, Wednesdays obviously the 27th.
We need to switch folks.
Yeah, 4 o'clock's hard for me to make.
Okay. No, this is for the actual workshop to present the conceptual, talk about financing, all of that.
26 would be better for me, because it is possible I might be able to weasel out of that, but the 27th, I say weasel out of?
Mr. Mayor, I can do either day at any time.
August, so we're talking a week from today?
Right, next week.
Five?
Five, I'll be there.
The 26th, is that what I heard?
26 at 5, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, as much as you can, yes.
6 to 5 o'clock.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. J-13, a delegation of general assembly delegate and alternate for a League of Cities. Mr. Cole?
Good evening, council. This is just a quick housekeeping item. This is to reaffirm the selection of city voting delegates for the upcoming League of California Cities General Assembly. The appointed members are Councilmember White and Councilmember Finn as the alternate. However, Cal Cities does require a second alternate, so a selection would need to be made of a second alternate.
Do we have any, any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open it up for council.
Not it.
So do we have any volunteers?
Mr. Mayor, I will not be present at that conference.
I'm looking for volunteers, sir.
All right, I'm just telling you, just letting you know.
I already planned on being in the voting person.
Oh, good.
Are you going?
But you're going.
Yeah, but I got to leave, I got another conference that day, I got to leave at 6 in the morning Friday.
Are you going?
Yeah.
So you are going to do it?
I'm going to be the alternate.
To the alternate.
They want an extra alternate.
Who won't be there. Because the first alternate's the alternate.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
You're not going to stay now?
That grin was.
I could leave and get another day of work if you stayed.
Ah, I'm the alternate, so you're the primary.
I understand.
So.
Hence the point of the, I'm giving you the option.
Alternate, alternate.
I'm giving you the opportunity for a promotion.
To be the delegate.
I'm good with alternate, thank you. So are you good, Nicole?
We do have to select an additional alternate, so we have to have a primary and alternate and a.
We already have one, he's the alternate.
He's the alternate, he's just like a.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
Because it's Cal Cities in general.
Yes, it's overall, okay, noted.
You okay with that?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we got J-14, winter meeting schedule.
Council, I have another housekeeping item for you. The meeting dates for November, December, and January are listed on the staff report. This is brought to you just to consider if council wants to make any adjustments to dates due to upcoming holidays, vacations. This is just your opportunity to set the schedule.
Okay. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Mia, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, so we'll open it up for council discussion, Councilmember Finn?
Yes, pending a state legislature vote this week, we may have an election on November 4th. We had talked about previously of not having a council meeting when there's an election day, so that's just a thought to put out there. And then also, I noticed on January 6th, when staff goes to put the agenda together, it's going to be right at New Year's Day and so forth, so I would recommend we go dark on January 6th and then a discussion on the 4th, on November 4th.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember White?
After this year, I'm going to be a little more selective on when we do blackouts because I don't think we're doing our public any benefit from having the kind of agendas that we're having tonight, because it's harder for us to manage 40 items on here. And if you're a member of the public and you're expecting to come and complain at city council, and you show up on a Tuesday that we're dark, that I have a problem with. I also have a problem with when we have these really long agenda items, that someone has to sit here for three or four hours before they can speak. So I think we've had way too many blackout or blocked-out dates this year, and so I'm going to be a lot more selective. I don't understand, does staff take two weeks off from Christmas to?
No, we have, the labor groups have negotiated Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the day after Christmas, and then Christmas Eve, or I'm sorry, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day.
And then January 6th one is also sometimes important, maybe not this year for reorganization, and Councilmember Finn brought up the November 4th. My concern, or my suggestion when we talked about this last time about not having a council meeting on an election day, is when you're a council member and you're up for reelection, and you're not thinking about the council meeting. That's not the case on November 4th.
This one.
This year. So as far as these six dates, I don't see any reason why we should block out any of them.
Councilmember Martinez?
I didn't see any either, to tell you the truth, because if someone's going to be, you know, on vacation or something, then they can mention that, and as long as we still have a quorum, I think it's better to go forward to, so we don't have packed agendas. The only question I had was, I think it is the sixth that pops up where it's difficult to get staff reporting and stuff done because of vacations, and then if everyone's gone and it's not done, they're going to push it to the other meeting anyway, and therefore we're going to have a light agenda. And then, you know, so you don't want to meet just to meet. But I would say that if it's not going to be a, if it's necessary to keep it, then I would keep it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go dark on that. So I don't see any reason to keep all, I think all six is fine to keep the way they are, so I agree with Mr. White, but the six I did have concern with, because I know that always falls in the time where there's vacations and trying to get the reports done and that kind of stuff. So you can comment on that to see if it's, if there's usually enough to have a meeting? I don't know. Is you required, what, two weeks in advance or a week and a half to have it?
No, it's actually more than two weeks now. The deadline for staff is two and three days, if I had a time.
Would it be an advantage for staff to have that off for us for their sake? Because that's another thing, too, I got to think of staff as well, so.
I mean, the two weeks prior, we would be closed three days and closed two days, and then we would come back in on that Friday to post the agenda, the Friday before January 6th.
For the 6th.
Obviously, if. I mean, the two weeks prior, we would be closed three days and closed two days, and then we would come back in on that Friday to post the agenda, the Friday before January 6th.
For the 6th.
Obviously, if, if directors are on vacation, they're, they're not gonna be putting items on for the 6th. But if council decides to have a meeting, we will build an agenda. I just don't have the, the staff report scheduled that far out right now.
Well, using typical, what we've done in the past, typical practice.
We've typically gone dark the first meeting in January, yeah.
So I'm okay keeping that dark. The other ones, I think we're fine on, in my opinion.
My...
Real quick question, typically on a normal meeting like today, when is your agenda finalized? I know you're making last minute changes on Thursday and Friday sometimes, but isn't the bulk of your agenda in place before Thursday?
It, it is, we post, but the mayor and I meet the Wednesday before, and for the most part, the agenda is set at that point.
It's already set then, and if we're looking at the 6th, then...
That would be New Year's Eve.
What's that?
That would be New Year's Eve, the Wednesday.
Right, right.
And in the private world, we all work New Year's Eve. We get New Year's off, we work New Year's Eve.
The labor groups have negotiated that as a holiday.
New Year's Eve?
Yeah.
Do we need all the labor groups for you to finalize a budget by New Year's Eve?
No, but it does...
Agenda to, to finalize an agenda?
No, certainly not. What I'm saying is city hall would be closed that day, and so we would set the agenda on Tuesday.
Right, so you could, right. I'm just saying it's not that big of a challenge.
No, we would adjust accordingly.
They would figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, my suggestion is to go dark January 6th, and then to do, I guess for lack of better terms, changing of the guard on the 2nd and on the 16th would be assignments.
That's what we typically do.
Yeah, so that's kind of the way I saw that happening, and then January 20th, we would.
Wait a second, changing the guard on the 2nd?
Correct.
We have to check our ordinance, because I think we, if there is not an election that year, we don't have to do it in the first week, so, do you remember that? That part of the discussion?
Do you, do you remember the ordinance, Nicole?
Just got it off the top of her head.
I know it varies from election to non-election.
Yeah, and just to mention the thing, on election night, I think that if we had, like you said, council members, I think in the every two years that we're up, that should be one that we consider versus every time.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with us approving not to go dark tonight, and then last week of December, you say we don't have anything for you on, on January 6th.
Absolutely.
I have this section of the code pulled up. City council selection of mayor, mayor pro tem shall occur annually at the first council meeting in December during a year in which no council member's seat is open for election.
Oh, it's the opposite then. It is the first.
It doesn't call out that it can be.
I still got some of my memory left.
But I don't think it calls out that it can be.
Better than mine.
But it didn't say it must be, it didn't say it can't be.
It said it shall be.
Said shall.
Shall.
But that's on the election, it doesn't say on the election, it doesn't tell you that you shall do something on the other year.
Or at the second regular or special council meeting in December during a year in which council member's seats are open for election.
Got it covered.
Because it depends on when the county certifies.
Yeah, so many days out of the certification.
So on non-election years, it's the first meeting in December?
Yes.
The rotation?
Non-election?
Non-election.
Is on the first?
Yes. And then election.
December 2nd, be good.
Tomorrow's the first session.
So I'm, I'll make, well, I just, I'm motion here, is there, the direction? Well, I, I'm for January 6th dark.
Yeah. Yeah. What's my...
That's what I recommended, too.
I, I'm not.
Okay, no worries.
Everything else is good.
Just for clarity, you wanna make a motion, and that way there'll be a clear record.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to move to go dark January 6th, 2026, keeping all other meetings as established here.
I'll second. Your roll call, please.
Council member Finn?
Yes.
Council member Martinez?
Yes.
Council member White?
No.
Mayor pro tem Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
Okay, brings us to legislative updates and discussion.
We do not have an update tonight, we will have one on the 2nd when they're back in session.
Economic development update.
Thank you, mayor and council. We had an economic development committee meeting on 13th, and a couple of major items were discussed. We had a really fantastic presentation by county staff on various workforce development programs that the county has, and youth job and internship programs. So it was quite an extensive presentation, I think it was very well received. And then the second major item we talked about was a discussion of the Purple Heart Parking Space potential program, and there was quite a bit of good feedback and ideas given to Mr. Jones and, and the staff, so I think that will be weaving its way forward. So it was worthwhile taking it to them, and we got a lot of good input. That's all.
Excellent. City's treasure report, it was attached, and city clerk report. Nothing? Thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing this evening.
City manager report?
Thank you, mayor, and I will be brief. There, P-1 is Union Pacific Railroad and Quiet Zones. I wanted to briefly explain to council the reasons behind why trains blow their horns. We've had some correspondence from a few residents out in Fairway Canyon that have asked that council, the, the subject matter in their email is noise pollution, and so I wanted to just clarify for council and the public the reasons why trains blow their horn and information on quiet zones. So under the train horn rule, locomotive engineers are required to sound train horns at least 15 seconds and no more than 20 seconds before reaching and at grade crossing. There's other reasons why they have to sound their horns, but that is the normal operation. The horn must not be sounded more than one quarter mile in advance of the nearest crossing, and these are public and private crossings. There is a private crossing out in Fairway Canyon that the resident has been emailing about, and it, it services property that I believe is a cell tower that is owned by Questar, and although it's not a public crossing, it's a locked gate, it is in fact a crossing, and so Union Pacific has said, under the train horn rule, they are required to sound their horn when they cross that. Train horns must follow a standardized pattern of two long blasts, one short blast, and one long blast. The request for a quiet zone has come up with this particular crossing, the, it's in the county, and so I immediately reached out to the county COO, and he put me in contact with another executive with the county, and it's my understanding that that county official has met with the resident that I've been corresponding with, and it was today, so I don't have an update. But quiet zones have been discussed, at least in my career here, four or five times over the years with different council bodies, and it has always been shot down. The quiet zones, it, it's a, a zone that's an FRA, which is a Federal Rail Administration approved exception to the horn rule, where trains do not routinely sound their horns at specific crossings. The, when the train horn rule was adopted, the FRA created a process allowing communities to designate quiet zones, and in quotations, it says, "provided that they meet certain safety requirements." Train horns, in a quiet zone, train horns are silenced for routine crossings, but can still be used by the engineer in an emergency or other critical situations, and in my experience, it's, if there's somebody in the vicinity of the track, they will blow the horn even if it's a quiet zone. Only a public authority, city or county, can establish a quiet zone, and to do so, the authority must complete an application, and they underline assuming the responsibility for the quiet zone, and that includes the infrastructure liability and all the things that come with the responsibility for that. They, we still, the city would still have to get approval from the FRA, we'd have to upgrade all of the crossings with safety features, which can be multi-million dollars in infrastructure costs, and some of the improvements would include median dividers, a four quadrant gate system, improved signage, and wayside horns. The, the horn, the FRA's horn rule does not explicitly address liability, however, a quiet zone properly established according to federal requirements, it's the understanding that as long as the safety measures make the crossing as safe as it would be, the cities, this is interesting, the city's liability should, and they use the word should, not increase, however, anytime there is something that happens on the tracks. And, and for this council, you guys, you've seen enough, we had an item on tonight from Union Pacific, you've seen enough, although they're great partners with us, they are not in the business of improving local jurisdictions crossing, and so I just wanted to go through that quickly with you. We will continue to correspond as often as needed, but for this particular crossing, Questar owns the land, it is in the county, and therefore this body has no jurisdiction to even entertain putting in a quiet zone.
And which crossing is that?
It's a private crossing out in Fairway Canyon, south of the development, right around the area between, like Shadow Creek and Palmer.
Okay.
And it, it's very obscure, if you're not looking for it, you won't see it, but my daughter's related to a UP engineer, and anytime there is a crossing, whether it's used or not, or how frequently, it is a crossing, and they do have to blow their horns, so... Any questions?
No, but I do remember shutting this down at least once because of the cost, the cost was just too much.
It's millions of dollars.
These crossings safe enough.
And, and I often find that, you know, residents move to Beaumont, we have some new developments out there, and they're not prepared, you know, for the sounds when the train blows, and I think at some point we all get desensitized to it. It's like my grandfather buying a house near LAX, he couldn't hear the planes.
But now our realtor makes sure that you go out and take them out when the train's coming by.
I, I honestly tell people you can hear the train everywhere, but Elizabeth...
I can hear it in Cherry Valley.
Elizabeth, I appreciate you're going the extra mile and helping that resident out and informing them and so forth.
And we'll, I'll follow up with him to make sure that, you know, the meeting with the county happened and that there's communication there.
Very nice, thank you.
And then the last item I have is the city manager's monthly report. I'd like to give kudos to Gus, he brought this to my attention, that his city that he came from did it. I'd like to thank all of the executive staff and the middle managers that helped put that together. Julie took the lead on it and cracked the whip with getting the information from the executives, and there were a lot of hands-on input, so you will see that the second meeting of every month now as a recap of the previous month, but I think there's a lot of really good information in it, and I think it's great for the public, and I hope the public goes through it. That's all I have.
And we have future agenda items, we have any future agenda items? Council member Finn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Serving on the Transportation Now Committee meeting, and we always talk about traffic, one of the topics that, that has been brought up in the past, and I wanted to see what we can get in terms of just maybe an update from staff on, is what is the city's responsibility in terms of transit and how we can either better the relationship, or what we're allowed to do with the school district? We can always tell when school's back in session, you know, here in Beaumont, and we've got schools on one side of town, houses on the other side of town, and so forth. And so I did some research and found out that some of the reasons why we don't have buses in schools is due to, you know, state, that the state does not mandate that school districts provide busing, and then there's obviously, you know, a budget problem with that. But I don't know what we are allowed to do to try to support them, and then maybe an overview of what routes that we have that go to the schools, and then I've also heard there have been some complaints when schools are short-scheduled that day and parents are a little empty-handed in terms of, you know, what they're able to do, so that may not, that problem may not be able to be solved, but just a general update of what, what the relationship is and what we're allowed to do would be nice. And so more, I, I don't, I don't know if it would be a resave and file kinda thing, just, you know, so more in public knowledge and so we can better understand it, we can better answer questions to the public, too. Thanks.
Council member White?
First of all, great item, we need to discuss that. Go back and look at the city or school board meeting, 2013, 2012, there was someone there saying, "Don't stop busing, because you'll never bring it back," and I won't tell you who that person was, but I don't know if this is an agenda item or just a suggestion to economic development, but as a, have, someone who has a son who's 20 years old has no idea how to apply for a job, and, you know, the kids this, this age think all you have to do is put an application in online and wait. And I think if, with the new Biz Hub, that we should consider offering training for recent high school graduates who aren't going to college, who need to know how to, how do you reach out to an electrician, how do you, you know, get an apprenticeship, things like that, they just don't know. And it's, it's a struggle for these, these kids, and especially when they're, when they're weighing $20 an hour to work fast food versus $17 an hour to start getting into a trade. So I, I think that, I think we could help our, our kids and provide more for our workforce here, if we were to be able to do something like that at that building. I know the supervisor has some programs that would probably fit right in there, and we could probably get the funding from him, but just a thought. Again, I don't know that it needs to be an agenda item, but I just wanted to bring that up.
If I may, real quick, maybe we can bring back the workforce development presentation along with the supervisor's presentation that was given to Economic Development Committee, because it addresses that specific thing. They are gonna be in the Biz Hub, and it talks a lot about building a resume, they also have, they help with certifications, so they, forklift operator certifications, they can get you your food handler's card if you're gonna work in a restaurant, and they have a lot of different certifications, and it was an excellent presentation from them, and I think would be worthwhile to show in this venue as well.
Could I, could I add on that? Do we invite them to, as they have a grand opening or whatever, the, the next council meeting that they come and present then, so then that way they're up and open for business, and they come and present to us? Just a thought.
The folks that presented at the EDC would be more than happy to come make the same presentation to the full council, and then as we move towards getting occupancy and getting the building up and running, we can organize additional information sessions here and elsewhere, too, but they would, they would love to make the presentation to the full council and the community, and, and I think it's worth doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other items? We good on that? All right.
Can I just add one more thing? I asked the finance director to pull the information on where the police department land was purchased from, and it was purchased from the police station CIP project, not downtown.
Okay. Council member Finn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to go quick. We had our T-NOW meeting, we did get a presentation from the banning blue zone, and that, they're working to promote healthier lifestyles, so that was nice, and we tried to work to see what we, what our group could do to help with transportation efforts on that. Attended PASCOM, just some general updates from that. Attended Riverside Transit Agency's Budget and Finance Committee. We had recommended improvements to 10 bus stops throughout the county, and they, you know, that's through a grant program on that, and then just reviewed cash flow protections, projections, quarterly investment report, and also, too, what they review, and it was surprising me joining that committee, is their natural gas procurement report, and so they even get to the weeds on that. And then I only caught part of the presentation, but the Sangre Gornia Pass Regional Water Alliance had a presentation by general manager Lance Eckhart from the PAS Water Agency, and they had an update on, and discussion regarding funding for the Sites Reservoir Project, and a discussion for funding for the Delta Conveyance Project, and so that's my report for the evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Council member Martinez, please.
Yes, uh, just a quick report. So I attended the Homeless-to-Work graduation program that Supervisor Gutierrez had in Cherry Valley. It was a very eye-opening, uh, program, and I thank him for the invitation. Uh, I attended the EDC meeting as well. The Veterans Expo went really well, and, um, thank you, mayor, for covering my RCA meeting for August.
Council member White?
Um, Cherry Festival recap, animal control. I think we had water, not animal control, animal shelter. And I think we had recycled water as well. Um, and that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Voight?
Yes, I, too, attended the homelessness-to-work program, and I thank the supervisor for that opportunity. It's a, a great program. It was nice to touch base with and see some success there. Um, we did the Touch a Truck, um, great event as well, as always, so thank you, uh, to the community services team for getting that all, uh, developed and going. It's always fun to see all the kids out there lined up waiting for what seems like hours to get on a truck.
It was a good time.
The little trash truck was hilarious. So they had like this little, um, replica. It was, uh, really nice. So, uh, and then animal shelter, two-by-two econ development, some more Cherry Festival stuff, so, that was it.
And we gave the congressman a tour of Stewart Park.
Oh, yes, we did. Thank you for that, yes.
Yeah, Touch a Truck, uh, wastewater, you need bigger stickers, all right, if you would, please? Um, I did attend RCA and WRCOG. Uh, I was just very disappointed that RCA did not have a Species of the Month.
No insect, no nothing?
No, nothing. I got nothing and liked it, so, um, and then the Veterans Expo. I thought it was very well-attended. Uh, turned out very good. I wanna thank staff for all the effort that they put into that. Uh, I know it doesn't come off without them, and so thank staff for that. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting at ten twenty-five.